We start it tonight. The time is 5:45 and we're going to call this meeting into order. This will be the first budget hearing of the 2024 budget season. So, Mr. Truesdale, I was about to say, Mr. Jarrett, Mr. Truesdale, would you call the role call, please?
Ms. Daniels?
Here.
Ms. Green?
Present.
Mr. Lawson?
Here.
Mr. Majors? Ms. Rose?
Present.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Present.
Ms. Bowers?
Present.
Thank you very much. We're going to have a little alteration to our agenda. We're going to start with an introduction by Mr. Brian McCutcheon, who's going to give us a brief overview before we move on to our committees, which will start with the office of the mayor. So, please take it away.
All right. Good evening, everyone. President Bowers, Chair Green, thank you. Just a put-together presentation here that I had envisioned last week at this time, but was not able to pull it together in time as we were working on the budget ordinance to get it timely submitted. What I have this evening, what's up on the screen relates to proposed Bill 10, the ordinance for the real estate tax levy. And this is more, we utilize this for two purposes. For early in the year, next year, reporting to DCED because it calculates out to a blended millage rate. There's no change, of course, in the levy on land, the 30.97 mils, and the 5.16 mils for buildings and improvements. How this relates to the current proposed 24 budget is down below. The estimated real estate levy of 17.3 is just broken down in those pieces there. We've identified what our debt service will be. The recreation is for recreation purposes, or Parks and Recreation. That's the total proposed budget for that budget unit. The pension MMOs, that includes all three. Police, fire, and non-uniform reduced by the anticipated state aid. So, that's why that's at $1,028. And then the remainder, it says general revenue. It just means that part of the real estate levy that can be applied to the other expenses for the general fund. So, that's that piece. Moving on to the budget side, again, that was Bill 10. Bill 9 is the proposed 2024 budget. And this might be a good viewing tool for review as it offers a, again, this is revenue and sources, which includes any fund that is utilizing fund balance for next year. This first page is the general fund. It's broken down by all the subcategories that classify our revenue. So, the lines are all listed there, including a total at the bottom you see for the general fund. And I'm not going to go through page by page, but it's set up where you can go through, like the next fund, for example, was Liquid Fuels. And it just moves on down the line, the host fund. Went too quick on that. Of course, the Neighborhood Services Fund, that's the next biggest fund of the city. But this includes all of our funds, including the Senator's Fund, our debt service. The incinerator fund is a fund that's, from the past, there are funds available in there that relate to city liens that were established years ago. But these funds are available for utilization within the Neighborhood Services Fund. So, if I page down and go through all the remaining funds, these are all the special funds. The events fund at the end, debt service. And we get to the total at the bottom there. So, that's on the revenue side. If I go to the expenditure side, and again, this is laid out in a similar format. I go to full screen mode, and this is quite lengthy because we have so many budget units, of course. And the general fund is the first up here, and it's broken down by our individual offices, bureaus, departments. And it's laid out the same way as proposed Bill 9 by the major categories or the major object categories, including the Personnel Services and our other category, which is predominantly capital expenditures. So, in the middle there, you see where it says Budget Manager. That represents what we've arrived at as far as a final proposed budget for next year. And again, just to show the total at the bottom. And again, this comes right from the financial system, the MUNIS system. And again, we, again, working through the initial submittal process, the review, and the decisions to whether to make decreases or increases. That's what these numbers are as a final figure for proposed 2024. So, these were put into the system, into the MUNIS system. And this actually forms the basis for the preparation of the budget ordinance that we submitted last Tuesday. Last schedule up here on the screen relates to the Capital Projects Fund. And it's a little more detailed, but that's just mainly because of the capital projects that are showing up over here, mainly streets and roads. They're named. And then the city also has a plan for upgrading of various bridges for expenditures to occur next year. So, the total budget for capital projects includes 8.4 in expenditures. The revenue side is higher than that because we are anticipating mainly funds that we have already expended on the Mulder Square project, which are in process of being submitted for reimbursement to the city. So, we expect those funds to materialize in '24. That's the full presentation on those slides.
Thank you very much. I don't have any questions at the moment on those slides. Does, do any of my colleagues have any questions on those slides? They were emailed to us. Just for the record, Councilman Majors was able to join us. We just had an introduction by Mr. McCutcheon's on just a budget overview. And now, we're going to move on to the committee business if there are no questions. Singnan, thank you very much. We are going to start with the office of the mayor. Questions that were presented were sent beforehand. So, I believe they were all sent to Dan, and he divvied them out to the different departments that they were supposed to be divvied out to. So, if there are no questions that were given specifically to you, then if you'd just like to give us an overview of your office, any major changes or any vision that you see changing in your office that's presented in this budget. And then at that point, if anyone else has any questions, we'll open the floor up for questions. Would you mind using a microphone, sorry?
The only major change I have is I moved Deb Robinson into a position in my office. She now will be the Special Assistant for Community Affairs.
All right. And then although it's not in your office specifically, do you have any major changes just to the overall organizational structure or how your departments are going to be divvied up this year? I know that you made some changes as far as like Parks and Recs. That was at the end of last year, but just kind of an overview, just for the benefit of the residents.
Okay. What I've done for Parks and Rec is I placed them under Department of Public Works, which they were originally there about four or five years ago. And I found it to be very productive when I made that move. I was concerned about some of the employees and how they were working in that department and were not being, I guess, and I have to be very, very honest with you, not being productive as far as not doing the things that they needed to do under Parks and Recreation.
Thank you very much. I don't have many questions. I guess just one request, and that's if we could just get an update from the Director of Equity and Compliance, just to go over some of the goals that he's had for this year and some of the things he's done over this past year and accomplished. So, I think that's my only question. I'm going to open it up to my colleagues for questions. I'm going to start to my far left with Councilman Rodriguez. Do you have any questions for the office of the mayor?
No questions currently for the office of the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Daniels, any questions for the office of the mayor?
Not specifically for the mayor, but I would like to see an organizational chart because I'm not, I don't have a good sense of the structure of the city right now.
Thank you. Councilman Majors, any questions for the office of the mayor?
Yes, thank you. So, with respect to the new position for Ms. Robinson, could you explain a little bit on what the Special Assistant, what are the job duties of the Special Assistant for Community Affairs?
She basically be doing the same thing that Gina did for us, Gina Johnson, Special Assistance to the Mayor. Instead, she handles all the community affair complaints that we receive, all the numerous engagements that I have. And she is my assistant when we go out to the different events and speaking events.
Okay. And then?
We also have been utilized in her services for complaints within the City of Harrisburg because we do not have a human relations coordinator. And she's worked as a human relations coordinator in her previous job. She has that experience, 30 years of doing that.
Okay, thank you. And then, similar to Vice President Green, the Director of Equity and Compliance, roles, responsibilities, objectives, like what's?
I would have, I don't have that with me today, but I will make sure I bring him in and have him give a complete rundown of what he does and what he does and what he's doing previously. And he's been really been involved in the fatherhood parent within the City of Harrisburg, Harrisburg School Districts, association with the Philadelphia. And he's working with Pittsburgh School Districts as far as parental diversity equity inclusion. He's on the mayor's diversity inclusion board. So, he's been very, very productive as far as the City of Harrisburg is concerned.
Okay. Those things you were mentioning had to do with the school district. I'm just talking about the roles with the City of Harrisburg. But can you get more information?
It's in collaboration with the Harrisburg School District.
Okay. Well, we can get more information on some of those.
And I will have that for you. I didn't bring his information down, okay?
All right. Yeah, thank you.
And I can have him come down.
Yeah. That would be appreciated, just given it's the highest paid role in your office, just trying to get a better sense of all of the job duties, roles, responsibility, goals.
And we did that when we first came in last year. I gave you a whole complete breakdown of what Mr. Singleton did. I had him here, excuse me, let me talk, please.
I didn't say anything.
Oh, okay. I had him come down and give you a description of what he's going to be doing, his job capabilities.
Okay. I understand that.
Okay.
It's been a year. We want to know what objectively either got accomplished or didn't get accomplished and what the goals are going to be moving forward.
And I will have him come down in front of you.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you, Vice President Green.
Thank you, Councilman Majors. Council President Bowers, any questions?
I don't have any questions. Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, President Bowers.
Well, maybe just one question. I will submit additional questions once I've had more time to review this version of the budget document. But just going back to the organizational chart, I just wanted to clarify when that change occurred exactly, just for the benefit of the residents. I know we discussed it during one of our quarterly reporting work sessions. It sort of came out that way. But I just wanted to note for the benefit of the public when the change occurred officially.
Officially, around September and October. We were having a problem with the Department of Parks and Recreation. Some of the responsibility and duties were not being done. Some of the residents, several complaints. And so, we took it upon, I took it upon myself to speak with our business administrator. We sat down with Mr. Baker and also Mr. West. And we, at that time, decided it was in the best interest of the residents to move that position, Parks and Rec, that department over to Department of Public Works. And since we have done that, it's been 100% efficient.
I guess a follow-up question then would be, how is the change being evaluated? I know you're saying it's a stark difference since the change occurred. But moving forward, how will you determine if they will stay or if they'll go, if the organizational chart will change again?
Well, they're more accessible to the public, and that's what I want. And that's what I needed. You know, the accessibility was not there. And now that we find it's 100% accessible, once something happens within the City of Harrisburg that relates to our Parks and Recreation, it's immediately done before we were waiting for a two-week, three-week period. It did not make sense that we had the number of employees that he has, and the work was not being done. Our concerns and complaints were not answered.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions.
Thank you, President Bowers. Councilman Lawson?
Thank you, Vice President Green, and thank you, Mayor Williams, for coming before us. I don't have any questions at this time.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Rawls, any questions?
Thank you, Vice President, excuse me, Vice President Green. And good evening, Mayor Williams, and thank you for being here. I don't have any questions either at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Back to me, I suppose. One of the questions that I just asked of all departments, and I'll ask them of all offices as well. What are your overarching visions or goals for 2024? How will you measure success for those goals?
The visions for 2024, we've already started, is to implement different services for the city residents. One of the things that I really wanted to do, and we've done, we made a decision to do, is to increase our, as you know, our trash rate. And that was really important. We wanted, we're in the midst now of talking with and speaking with the standard parking because we want to know what's going to happen in the next six to 12 months. We have not received any revenue. So, that's one of the things that I'm really, really involved in right now, trying to get all the parties together. We do, we were together last week, but we did not come to a conclusion about how we're going to move forward to, you know, to receive revenue from the standard parking.
Thank you. And then the other question that I just asked of all departments and offices was, as you look back at 2023, can you go over some of your goals and some of the measures of success and kind of just evaluate yourself?
Well, I think I'm successful in bringing more development to the City of Harrisburg. As you look around the City of Harrisburg, you see five major developments coming. And you also look at Harrisburg and see several, maybe what, 24 to 50 businesses here in the City of Harrisburg that are new. And now, we're looking at also looking at doing repaving streets in the City of Harrisburg. We've done 20. We're now looking to do about 20 to 30 more next year.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments from my colleagues for the mayor's office? Councilman Daniels?
Thank you. Clarification for me between lobby room and the mayor's office. So, who is handling the complaints related to human relations investigations?
At the moment, that is our office.
And which role is that?
It isn't. It's just, it's just in our office.
So, some, a complaint comes in and whoever is available?
The lawyers get the complaint.
Okay.
We have a handful, but as usual, most of them are actually not from the City of Harrisburg. They're events, they think we're the state.
Okay.
And so, you know, they think we're the public, the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission. So, they're emailing us to follow up something they sent to them as opposed to something that's actually in the city. There is one current complaint that's in there right now.
Okay. And then the second one is what is the mayor's office doing to address a lot of the homeless encampments that we've been seeing? We know what's been done so far, but what is the strategy going forward?
As you know, they are on a particular area that we have to clean up. And that's really important to us environmentally. They are not utilizing the porta pottos, so they're utilizing the grass area. We have to get them out of that particular area. Some areas that they are on, they are private. So, we are looking now, I'm working with CATCH, and you know Denise Hill is chairman of that particular board. And she's working with the homeless to move them. I know a lot of people are concerned about us moving them, but we do have to move them.
So, that, my question was in where they're specifically going to be? Like, what is your strategy for addressing homelessness?
Well, we strategized already. We already.
Moving people around is an addressing.
Well, we already, we've already done the things that we could do. We provided them with porta potties, we provided them with different tents. We provided with blankets. So, we want them to go in a place that's safe. And not only that, we want to go into and to utilize the facilities that we have onboard for them in the different areas. So, we continue to do that. We continue to provide them anything.
So, there's no new strategy for 2024?
There's, there's different organizations that will house them. Starting December 1st, all the particular housing have been available for them. Now, we strategized before trying to make sure that they're safe and that they have proper housing and that they have the necessary essential things that we need, that they need.
Thank you. That's it for me.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rawls?
Thank you. Yes, I did have a few questions. My first question was, what, if anything, are the next steps for the State Street project? I know that it's been on hold or delayed, but is there any updates on it or?
And when the engineering department, Mr. Snow will be able to give you the update.
Okay. Thank you. My next question was, I know that you had spoke about making sure everyone had about a 2% to 3% raise for this year's budget.
2%.
2%. If anyone was higher than 2%, can you tell, would you be able to say why?
There was two corrections that we're going to make, and I think that was in the Finance Department. We will be correcting those two particular salaries. And that was, that was incorrect, but they put in.
Okay, thank you. I was just wondering if there was.
That'll be a correction.
Okay. Thank you. And my last question was, there's two large car dealerships that are moving from out of Harrisburg, which means if, and correct me if I'm wrong, we would not get their property taxes anymore. They're moving into Swat Air. So, maybe this is, this could be a budgeting question, but how are we budgeting for the loss or the deficit we will have because of them moving out of the city?
Well, that's not an impact. We should be more concerned about the fact that we're not receiving any money from the parking. And that is a deficit for us. And also, the reassessments that's going on in the City of Harrisburg. A lot of the businesses, as well as the citizens, are asking for reassessments. So, we're going to be impacted largely by that.
And do we have a plan for that?
That is a downfall. At this point, yes, we're working on a plan.
Okay. Thank you. Those are all my questions. Thank you very much, Mayor Williams.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Councilman Majors?
Well, thank you. Well, since you opened the door, I guess I'll step through it. With respect to the parking situation, what is the plan? Because let's talk about the realities that cities are facing, not just the City of Harrisburg, but cities across the country.
Exactly.
Businesses are moving more to telework. That impacts residents in the fact that we don't have as many folks coming into the City of Harrisburg. One of the biggest, I guess, one of the biggest employers are Commonwealth, you know, has recently signed an agreement with, you know, workers that telework is a reality for a lot of folks, not to mention all the other businesses. So, we, you know, we have this parking asset that we have the agreement with SP. What's our strategy to deal with that? Because it's not just going to affect us on parking, but a multitude of issues when it comes to taxation in the city.
And I'm going to let Neil answer that because we just met this week, or last week, I'm sorry.
So, I, because it's not our proposal, there is a proposal from PEDFA right now. We met with their attorneys, their finance people, the current asset manager, the current parking manager. Previously, we had met with the finance people and the county folks on the same question. There is a proposal the mayor is considering, but has not agreed to, which will be frankly, and the mayor was very frank with them about this would be a Band-Aid on the problem. It wouldn't address the fundamental problem. We have asked them to, in the next year, to work with us to address the fundamental problem, which is the system isn't working for all kinds of reasons. They said that PEDFA committed that we're always willing to sit down and have that kind of conversation. There's been a lot of changeover with the new administration who is in those seats. So, we are really just starting discussions. I think everyone involved, the city, the county, the Commonwealth, the insurance carrier, all recognize the nature of the problem. And, you know, and the solution is, there are solutions there. They're just going to be big political lifts that involve more than the city, you know? But we have another 30 years on this agreement to live with. And so, you know, we have asked that we sit down and move this up the food chain to people that actually can make those very big decisions. And it's in everybody's interest, not just our interest. It's in everybody's interest to solve the problem.
Okay.
And also, let me just add a little bit more to that. 10 years ago, when we sat down, we restructured this debt. I asked, my question was, what are you going to do in five years if this is not, if we don't see any revenue coming from the standard parking? And now, we're at the same basis as we are today, where the City of Harrisburg now has even gone down two steps lower on the rainfall payments. So, my concern is that if we do this agreement, where would the city fall and how much revenue would the city? And we will not get any. And so, I'm very, very seriously looking at not doing this.
Okay. Yeah, I guess we're, there's going to be, I have to have a lot of conversations because again, just the, look, the realities of what COVID did to accelerate what was already calming down the pipe are coming to fruition here. So, thank you.
If you want to be involved in that, just let us know. And you can sit in on the meeting.
Councilor Rodriguez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Mayor, just a quick question. As we made our appointments this year for the CLIAC Citizens Law Enforcement Council, I just wanted to ensure that the department or your office was forward-thinking, setting something aside for those CLIAC meetings as we wait on your appointment. This way, they'll be taken care of financially, and they're able to meet and have their due diligence done. Is that something that's being considered currently?
We are doing that. We're looking at all the implications.
Awesome. Thank you.
Councilman Lawson?
Thank you, Vice President Green and Mayor Williams. This is probably more of a, more of a statement than a question. As we're looking at strategies for working with the homeless and the beds that have been provided, generally, when I'm working with the homeless, I see that we run out of those bids relatively quickly. The, I agree with you, we have to clean up what's going on out there. And we can't let people live in filth. And that does create a health hazard for everyone coming through. But I also would like to say that we probably need to find a greater strategy because it's going to be a matter of time until each of these beds that have been identified by CATCH are taken up. And we're still going to have people, people sitting. And I know that you won't have the answer. But I just say we have to work towards it.
Yeah, let me just say this to you. We did make an, we had an agreement last year for the homeless, and we opened up the Rite Aid, the old Rite Aid building. We provided the beds, the cots, the blankets. Also, we provided soup, hot soup, coffee, tea, and sandwiches. And not one individual came in to that building. So, we are doing things to make sure that we try to provide services for them.
Okay. Last year, I was unaware of that because I had several people come to me and ask where would we stay? If we're doing something similar, please, and I'm sure you put the word out, but just as much as we can get it out there.
Through our director, Denise Hill, yes. She, like I said, she's the chairman, and she's always put that word out. And she's working with the counselors and the health, the mental health advisors with the individuals who are homeless. They have to want to come in off the street. They have to want to clean up behind themselves. They have to want to utilize the facilities that we have for them. You cannot mandate that they do, or mandate that they move. We request that they move because of the environmental issue. They're not using the porta pottos. They're leaving filth on the grass.
Right. I understand that. And it's also usually multifaceted, the issue of long-term homelessness. And many of the people that we're discussing are dealing with mental and substance. people that we're discussing are dealing with mental and substance issues that are keeping them away from some of these locations. But I was unaware of the extra steps that we had taken last year, and as people approached me, I didn't, after I found every place was full, I didn't have anywhere to send them. But knowing this would help.
We've also taken steps where last year, in the summer, well, this summer, we provided shower caps, shower heads, and also opened up the different water facilities for them, the hydrants, so they could take a bath. We could provide them with towels, we provided them with washcloth soap. So we do try to, you know, take care of them. We cleaned up an area for them and provided with tents, and no one moved there. So we are trying to work with them, you know, they have to wanna work with us as well.
Right. I will contact Mrs. Hill for whatever we're doing this, this winter. And as, as people come, I will at least give them that, I'll give them that information. I understand, not everyone will go somewhere.
Well, they probably hear it, because they're on TV tonight, they hear it.
Well, some will.
And those in the audience here, the audience hear it as well, so they can relay that information to them as well. Where they say the Harris, the Harrisburg's not doing anything, we're doing everything possible, even putting money into cash for them.
Okay, great, and that's, that's good to hear as well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so, just real quick on this, I'm, I wanna move on, but I can't, because, okay. If the, what other resources, if you're talking about an unhoused population, and then something being notified on Channel 20 about a service, that isn't the best resource?
And that's why we have.
So what other resources?
That's why we have Denise Hill, who's the chair, who works with, with the other organizations, Mr. Majors. You yourself know what services we provide through her. You've been on council long enough to know what we provide through the Department of Economic Development, she serves as our CASH chairman.
Right. We also are leaning on one person very heavily on a lot of roles. We talked about this last year with Ms. Hill and the number of projects, dual roles that are being put on her. Other than her, again, this is bigger than one person. Working with CASH is great, what, how are we making sure wraparound services are available for people? What are we doing to get those?
She works with those organizations to make sure those services are provided. Not only her, there's two other people that work with her, align with her.
Okay, again, if there's any, I guess we'll talk with Ms. Hill at some point to get some of the resources that she has, that we can also help to get that message out there.
And we do through, and Matt Maisel is our Director of Communications, make sure that's out there as well, Mr. Majors.
Okay.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. Madam Mayor, I was working with the business manager, Mr. Hartman closely, as far as cycling safety for public safety. Just wanted to know, like, going into the new year, is that something we could still work on? Small improvements, just maybe reflective paint in some areas, just to mitigate or even eliminate cycling deficits? Is that still a possibility, Dan, or? Madam Mayor? Would that still be a possibility of interest?
Yes.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. President Bowers?
I have another question regarding the organizational chart. Is it accurate that planning is now under Building and Housing?
Yes.
Okay, so the two changes were, planning is now under, okay?
I'm sorry, I forgot about Mr. Knight.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Madam President, can you say that one more time, just the changes?
Yes. Planning is now under the Department of Building and Housing.
And then the Parks and Rec is now under Public Works?
Yes.
Where it was, where it was five or six years ago.
Thank you.
Thank you, I don't have any other questions, just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from our colleagues? I don't really have any other questions, I guess just kind of a comment. I know I did ask the question that was partially answered by Director Hill, but I'd love to see a robust economic development plan for the city of Harrisburg. Not just as far as businesses, and how we're gonna grow our businesses. I'd like to see it for over the five years, but also how we're going to lift the residents of Harrisburg socio-economically, but also their quality of life. I guess I'm a big vision person. I'd love to see the big vision of where we see ourselves hitting in 2024, 2025, just overarching some of those big goals that we can work towards and steps that we're taking to get them. I understand that we're being conservative with the budget, and I appreciate that, because we need to be good stewards of the residents' money, but we also need to make sure we're dreaming big for the residents of Harrisburg as well, so that we can make for sure we are being the most efficient and effective as possible, and that we're really creating that vision, that dream. Because if we don't create an area to head towards, then we'll find ourselves moving slower and slower. So I'd love to see, and even work with you to create some of those visions, and especially those economic development plans, because I feel like if not, we're going to find ourselves moving slower than we need to, and I'd hate to see us becoming stagnant. Especially looking at some of the five-year projections in our five-year plan put forth, it's drawing down our fund balance way too quickly, and we're not seeing plans on how we're planning to build this up with our economic development. So that's really important to me, because we don't find ourselves in a position that we wanna draw down to our fund balance, I think it was down to like 70 million over the five-year plan or something? And that's, that's not feasible, especially since we paid off a large portion of our debt, all of our debt, shall we say, over this last year. And one of the biggest questions as we were making those payments is, where does that leave our fund balance in the long run? Because we are unable to take loans, or, you know?
And we probably would have been able to give you a better, you know, outlook of what we're gonna do for 2024, but we were hit with the reassessment. And that is really something that you should, you know, meet with me, so that we can go over. I have a copy of all the individual residents and businesses who have to ask for a reassessment. The reassessment board has denied some, and they approved some, so you really need to meet with me. And that overall has put a stop to, you know, growing in economic development for the residents of Harrisburg, as well as, you know, the parking, which is, revenues has not hit us for last year, has not had any revenue for this year, and we won't get any for the next two years. So it has an impact on, on how our budget is, and also our overall growth for the city of Harrisburg.
I completely understand that, and that's why we have great, great brains that lead our departments to help us work around those things.
And we're working around that. We're looking at what we can do as far as to all these empty buildings downtown, because of the resident, because workers are like Mr. Majors mentioned, about 80% of state workers are not here, as well as some of the private industries down here. The buildings are all unoccupied. We're trying to encourage those developers to turn them into apartments or townhouses. So we are, we do have plans, we're looking at trying to get a major grocery store here in the city of Harrisburg.
All right.
So we are developing plans, and we do have things in place.
Right. I believe that, I just would love to see the presentation of it, share the vision with us.
Until we have confirmation.
Right, I'm just saying, in general, share the, share the vision with us, so that we can move forward and help to move towards those goals. I will say, though, as we're talking about some of the things that obviously would create a reduction in our revenue, the projections compared to the five-year plan that I believe was finalized a few months ago, shows that our revenue would increase this year compared to what it was projected at last year. So that's kind of counterintuitive there, to say that we were hit with these things, and so we're gonna see a revenue reduction, but then in our five-year plan, we're showing almost a $5 million revenue increase from what we projected less than six months ago. So that's just, that was gonna be a question more for the finance department, but I guess just because, you know, kind of brought some of those things up. So that's, that's something that obviously is concerning to me. If, if we're projecting an increase in revenue, but we're talking about a decrease in revenue, then.
And that's why we're, we're working together to make sure that we reach that, that mark.
All right, well, I look forward to working with you, especially with creating, creating this economic development plan, because it's definitely big for the city.
I'm here every night, for anyone who wants to meet with me.
All right, well, I appreciate that. Are there any other questions or comments from my colleagues? Thank you very much for being here tonight, we appreciate it. And have a good night, feel free to stay throughout the meeting. I know you said you have some, some other things to get to.
I did have a swear-in, but I think it's over, it's 6:25.
Thank you for being here tonight, feel free to stay for the rest of the meeting then.
Okay.
We're now going to move forward with the Office of the Business Administrator.
Good evening, everybody. I'll go through the questions that were submitted, and then there are a couple of questions that were peppered in here for the mayor that I'll speak a little bit on. The first question that was presented was a decrease in the special assistant salary. When Deb Robinson moved over, we took somebody with 30 years' experience in municipal government, moved to the mayor's office. I'm just lowering that salary back to where it was with the predecessor who took the office. We're looking at filling that, obviously. It's gonna be tough to get somebody with 30 years' experience, that's why that was, was lowered back on that scale. I did not want to keep that at $70,000. The next thing is, is on the consulting line item, that's for city lobbyists. What we have done is, is we have went through and scored proposals. We're waiting to do interviews, we're waiting for a couple of things to clear up. There's been quite a bit of logjam of things happening within state government on Capitol Hill, due to things in the legislature, but that's something, right after the new year, we're gonna be looking at interviews. Councilwoman Green, you were part of that process of scoring. We're gonna look forward to doing that again with interviews, Controller De Bruyne also, Marita Kelly, Chief Enterline. So have a group come together and have those interviews. Like I said, this year, we just haven't filled it due to a lack of legislative action, due to just some political maneuvering that happened there, just, just to save money. Going a little bit further down, we have 2023 goals, and kind of where we were at, and then 2024. For 2023, and I know this was something Council President Bowers was very, very important to her, was dealing with employee performance reviews. We completed the implementation of that and went through that. Most everybody had them done within, within the parameters of what we asked. There was a couple that did preliminary ones, so we're gonna look at continuing to refine that over, over next year. Ambac debt payoff, thank you to everybody on the stage for helping take part in that. That was a huge, a huge moment for the city. There was a lot of work with the Controller's Office and the Treasurer's Office in making sure it was the right thing and doable. There was the Mayor's Department reorganization, as we had earlier stated. There was a lot of breaking apart of things that had to happen, you've noticed it in the books, within facilities and special projects and Parks and Rec, we completed that. I know something that Neil and I worked a lot on with Jack Dean, our counsel, was the completion of the IAFF contract for the Firefighters Union. That was completed with an arbitration award happening a few, a few weeks ago. The big, the big, big-ticket item that's been going on in the Department of Administration and kind of been fun and sad and a real learning experience at times, is the Tyler implementation. The financial systems rolled out, the budget system, we went through it this year, had to, as we've been going through it, work out kinks within the budget document software, but we're at the point right now where the hard coding of everything's working, we're doing our check runs, everything's maneuvering onto there. And then, you know, the big, the big win was changing the structure on how the city paves from primarily contracting out, which was getting to be a very, very costly endeavor, to taking the workforce we had, many of which who did this on contract work in their prior careers, taking that in-house, the pilot section in-house completed 17 street sections. We're looking at a larger implementation next year, on top of some contracted paving. For 2024, we'll be working on some new trash contracts, which we've already started. We're gonna be working on a complete capital plan with departments, working with the Site Logic team, which is within the city business who focuses on capital improvement plans. We're to continue that Tyler implementation. This is a multi-year project. Utility and tax billing for external people would probably be the best way to look at next year, and then looking at some employee self-service for, for internal members of council. So you'll be able to pull pay stubs and tax documents and things like that. So we're working on that. And then coupled, going back to the lobbying point, is working with Chief Enterline and a potential lobbyist to better position Harrisburg City Fire. They've seen a great deal of growth in just their equipment and training costs and their duties. For example, Harrisburg Bureau Fire will use the defibrillators within all the state buildings. That's something 10 years ago, that was not in their job description or job duty. What goes with that, certifications, trainings, different things like that. So we need to do a better job of telling the story. We started over the last year in doing that. The dollar amount that we do get from the state has, obviously, as inflation has gone up and costs have gone up, shrunk on its impact of the Harrisburg Bureau Fire budget. So we're gonna really, really put a press on working with our partners at the state to get that number elevated. And then one of the other things we're working on with the county is, at the lowest cost to us, by using partnering, to completely rehabilitate all the deficient bridges in the city, the largest one being over the Norfolk Southern tracks on South 17th Street. That's gonna be a huge multimillion-dollar lift, that's not going to be a multimillion-dollar cost to city taxpayers, as we've received help from partners around the state and the county on that. So those are those, those goals. To go to just a couple of the questions that were asked, Councilwoman Rawls, you had mentioned the, the car dealership question. And Councilwoman Green, you mentioned with property taxes, the change in the numbers. In the past three months, these appeals have primarily been, been filed. Some very, very large institutional-type places. I think Neil and I, we had a joke, you can walk out of the front of City Hall, and everything you pretty much see is trying to get their property taxes lowered. But if you look on page 23, we have already started to put a downward projection on property tax revenue. We don't know where it's gonna land. These appeals have a structure with the school district, the county, and the city. If they don't like what they get out of that, they have a right to appeal it to court. So we're, I'll say, at the beginning stages of that process, but we're already starting to get the budget prepared for, for that. And if you go on page 23, it will be like the top figures. You can see where we've started to, to move that, move that down. But there are, there are some business options, we're looking, we're, we're working with a major hotel developer to build another property. You'll probably be seeing more coming out about that, I'd say, in the next 60 to 90 days. That will be a, a huge economic driver for the city. And then, Councilman Rodriguez, you had mentioned on pedestrian improvements. Dan Snow can speak more on that, but he's been, since he hit the ground, he's working on a road diet on Division.
Cycling, cycling.
Yep, road diet of Division Street, which would include those sort of improvements for pedestrians and cyclists. Division Street has much too large of a footprint, and it's very dangerous, especially when you look at Sixth and Division, there's a school there, school crossing. He's building that out right now. On top of that, we worked with Representative Mattson to get $60,000 in traffic improvements, studies for traffic improvements. One of the things PENDOT requires, if you're going to make changes, you have to provide studies to prove that they're merited. So Representative Mattson was instrumental in helping get us some funding for that. Dan can speak more on that. We're also on 7th Street, if you notice, in the area where the new federal building is and their, their parking lot is, they're having a giant issue of people flying down 7th Street. Dan, two weeks ago, just started working in concert with the U.S. Marshals and the, the federal, the federal authorities there on how to slow traffic there. And then, he has a, he has in his mind a plan to complete some of the longstanding projects, like the East-West Connector, looking at the Capitol Gateway, getting those things through the finish line next year. But he'll be able to explain a lot more of that vision, as he's been trying to take what's there. A lot of it is trying to put the funding pieces together, so it doesn't have to be general fund. There's so many different pots of money, it's just you have to go and find them, and he's done a pretty good job so far. And I know he and Marita worked, worked with myself on the, the bridge project, which I think is only a hundred and some thousand dollar city investment for what is a major, major investment. So those are the questions that were asked there, and just some of the follow-up. I wanted to then turn to my budget. There's not really a lot going there. I've, at some point this year, said, if I need supplies, I'm paying for myself. If I'm. If I'm driving somewhere, I'm paying for it myself. Uh, so you'll see a lot of things zeroed out there. Um, the one thing you will see is is for the lobbyist that's still there. Like I said, we're gonna be moving forward. Uh, with that, um, there's not really much else to add individually, line by line, about that budget. I try my best to be respectful of, if I need a pen, I'm gonna buy the pen myself. If I need this, if I need to drive somewhere for a meeting, for example, uh, Thursday, there's a city manager's meeting in Bethlehem I'm gonna drive to. My own car, my own money. So all of that stuff's out of the budget. Um, so there's not really much there. There's no padding whatsoever, uh, when you look at tuition, training, different things. Not spending, to be more prudent with taxpayer money.
Thank you very much. Um, I don't have any questions for you at the moment. I'm gonna open up to my colleagues. I'll start to my far right with Councilwoman Rawls.
Thank you, President Green, and, um, good evening, and thank you for being here, Mr. Hartman. Um, I was wondering if, um, you could further explain for myself and for the residents what your goals are for the lobbyist you are looking for to hire and what we will see as a city from the, um, actions of that lobbyist helping us.
Yeah, I mean, I think if you look at the, the prior lobbying, a lot of it was around legislative goals. Um, while I think the one main legislative goal is is to get the state fire support number up, um, because our fire department is doing more and more, and on top of that, doing more and more calls outside of the city limits, uh, which puts, puts a strain on the department. Um, that would be the primary legislative goal, but from a lobbying side, um, and I know, um, everybody up on the, uh, stage here, they, they, they know what's at stake. A lot of the money, once it flows through the budget, ends up with departments. And we can go and we can talk to deputy secretaries, secretaries, bureau directors, different things like that, but also having a lobbyist to help shake the trees, to bring the dollars in, especially when it pertains to places like D C E D, uh, PennDOT, Department of Health, uh, Human Services. There are a lot of programming money that's out there. So what we wanna do is really put a, a, a good focus on how we can go after pots that are already established and are already out there so we can get our, our slice of the pie. PennDOT's a huge, a huge example of that. So that's, that's primarily what the focus is. One's gonna be on the legislative side on the state fire support. The other one's going to be, uh, going to get those money. So for example, the Division Street Road Diet, what we're looking at doing there, multimodal funding is definitely applicable to there. Having that extra push from a lobbyist to help with that would be instrumental in helping make that happen, because the more, more you're able to think outside the box of how you can shrink that road, the width of that road, the more likely you're gonna be able to get that multimodal funding. So part of it is a salesmanship and packaging job as much of it is as an engineering, and the lobbyist will help with that.
Sorry, my mic wasn't on. I turned it off so I don't speak into it while you're speaking, but, um, sometimes I feel like as a city, we have a lot of open tabs when it comes to fixing the streets, and I agree with you about Division Street, which is the same for State Street. So then I was wondering, um, and not, don't mean to harp on it, but it's been such an open tab for so long. Um, will, can that lobbyist help us finally close that tab of State Street before we open up another street tab? And then we just have all these, you know, open projects, which I know as a city, we always have a lot of open projects, but I do feel like State Street's been open for so long, and I would hate to move on to something else before we actually have that in the books.
A plan with State Street has been on PennDOT's desk since last spring.
Right.
They're to be getting back to the city engineer. Uh, I know the city engineer, uh, reached out to me with, uh, he has some interest in meeting, uh, with some constituents about it. Um, again, that's just the process of needing to deal with Kinsley, uh, the construction company. That can't happen until PennDOT certifies a few things and goes through a few things. Um, it was delayed this year. Um, there are a number of things that PennDOT has to work through. Um, they, uh, had uncovered things and realized they have to do, uh, a, a large milling with, um, a dust palliative, uh, job to mill that road and then refinish it because of some issues the road has structurally. Um, that is one of the things that has slowed that project up, is them having to go through their process with that. But they have a commitment of money to do that, and, um, my expectation is, uh, that's one of the completing projects that Dan Snow's looking at doing, uh, next year.
Thank you. That was, um, all my questions. I just wanted to know what we could expect from the lobbyist and how we could close some of those tabs we have.
If there are more, and if there are more things that come out that we want to get done within State Street, that, let's just say, maybe District Eight, the district office who handles the approval, might not be keen on, that's something where the lobbyist could definitely come in and potentially, from the central office aspect, put pressure to get things moving.
Strong-arm them a little bit.
I wouldn't say strong-arm. Get them, get them to understand.
Strong-arm, but thank you. They may need that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Lawson?
Thank you, Vice President Green. Thank you, Mr. Hartman. I, I, I don't have any questions at this time.
Thank you. President Bowers, any questions?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Majors, any questions?
Uh, no questions at this time. Thank you. But I'll, I'll have some follow-up.
Thank you. Councilwoman Daniels?
So, um, this is for you too. Just again, if you could make sure that we have, um, a good, um, organizational chart, um, because part of the challenges are, in terms of the managerial salaries, is figuring out who is, um, supervise, the number of supervisees versus supervisors.
Stay in control sort of issues.
Exactly, exactly.
Tim, Tim and Marita, they have the software that they can have that thrown up, uh, tomorrow, probably, and then they'll have it for you for tomorrow's meeting.
And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Rodriguez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, first and foremost, thank you for joining us, Dan. It's always a pleasure. Um, and I wanna, from a personal level, just wanna send you and Madam Mayor, thank you for throughout the years, uh, answering those calls. I mean, we've been to residents' homes, I mean, really, at the spur of a moment, too. Sometimes I'm surprised when, uh, you guys do pull up, like, it's amazing. So to see the smiles on a lot of the residents' faces that aren't always documented or put on social media is the true testament, so I do appreciate that. Um, but then also, I know the org chart has Madam Mayor in charge of public safety. Um, but do you know, um, what would be the easiest line of connection? Uh, one of my questions is about the technology. I'm constantly having issues with my computer, which is the sole reason for my position. The, I was elected by the residents to do my, you know, due diligence. It's difficult when, on the IT level, I barely can access a lot of this information, and it's quite frequent. It could just be my experience, uh, maybe everyone else's.
Data, like data, PDF files.
Just, just my computer in general. I don't think it's the actual unit either. It's just like, yeah, I don't wanna waste time on that, but it goes with the communication for public safety, so a lot of times I'm missing meetings, I'm missing swearing-ins, a lot more things I could be engaged in, involved in.
Think Nate Grumbine's here from IT. He's, I think he's gonna be presenting later.
Okay.
Uh, after the meeting, let me.
Absolutely.
He gets a lot of.
I guess the easiest way as a councilman would be to be able to flip open my laptop and just use it. No tricks. Most of the time, we're running from a full-time position. It's, we don't really have an extra hour to figure this one out, right? Like, when we gotta get it, we kinda gotta just log in and get it. That would help a great time.
He'll help fix whatever you need.
Thank you.
Been very, very good with everybody that way.
Thank you. And then do you have an idea when the ARPA task force meetings will begin?
Um, I know Denise is gonna give you an update on hers. She started with their staff. I, she's just about ready for the beginning rollouts, uh, and I know Sasha is gonna work on it from the park side of things, I think, right after the start of the new year on, on her end.
Okay. And then are those studies currently underway that you were referring to, so we can?
Representative Mattson's?
Yes.
We just, Rebecca literally just got the, I think, the money last month, and Dan's kinda just planning, planning some things out.
When we can, oh, perfect, perfect. And then that, that's the contingency on us actually making the improvements needed. We just need that.
If it's a state road.
Okay.
If it's a state road, if it's a city road, we have a little bit more flexibility.
Perfect. Okay. No further questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Councilman Majors?
Uh, just one, in terms of your special assistant position, has it been posted yet?
Not yet.
Okay. Um, and the transition from Ms. Robinson has already occurred, correct?
Yes, uh, I would say probably June or July.
Okay. All right, yeah, no.
She been, she dialing back on, on my side, moving forward on, on with the mayor. She's been actually, she did both jobs for, I'd say, probably two or three months.
Okay. But currently, it's just you right now.
Yep, since, since we started doing budget and a couple other things that we've been working on, I haven't put much focus on.
Okay. Well, let's, let's get that taken care of. Look, uh, we know we have a lot of, there's a lot of things that need to get done in the city, and ensuring you have an assistant in terms of all the things that you have on your plate isn't, isn't important.
It's, it's in the next couple of weeks.
Okay.
Once we get through this process.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for the Office of the Business Administrator? Singnan, thank you. I appreciate you being here tonight.
I will add what Councilman Rodriguez said. Thank you, and it's the same for everybody else here. If you need me ever to come out to respond to a constituent issue, um, I'm always here. Uh, Councilwoman Rawls, I just helped you on something. I, I'm always, always ready and available.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Uh, next, we have the Office of the City Solicitor. He's already at the desk.
Good evening, Madam Chair.
Good evening.
There were, uh, four questions forwarded to us. Um, I was gonna go over a slight overview of, of what we've been doing for the last year. Um, our number-one goal was to fill our staff, and we have done that. Um, there was one part-time position we did not fill and is not gonna be budgeted for this coming year, but we think we have enough personnel who could do the same skills, uh, for what we need. Um, the, uh, it takes, I always tell people, it takes about a year working at the city. It doesn't matter what time you start, uh, to see it all, to get a sense of the flow of the city and the budget and the resolutions and the contracts and the court cases, because there are sort of cycles to these things. Um, we had our, two of our administrative staff started on the same day in, uh, May, May fifteenth, our lean specialist, which is the first one we've had, and our assistant, uh, uh, legal assistant, uh, who was assisting with right-to-nos. Um, the, uh, the paralegal legal assistant world in the law bureau for years handled many things, and then right-to-no just sort of took over that job. Um, as of today, we're at four hundred and ninety-six right-to-nos for twenty twenty, uh, three. Um, last year, we ended the year with five hundred and twelve. You know, so we've processed a thousand right-to-nos out of our office in, you know, just under, uh, twenty-three months here. Um, it used to be a hundred and fifty a year, you know, and they've gotten larger and more complex, uh, so we, we are dividing the duties up, trying to put the more complicated ones on our experienced person, getting our other person involved in, in the ones that are more routine, and there are some that are very routine. A lot of people, a lot of our right-to-nos go to codes about permits. A lot of them go for police reports, which they can't have, um, and we have to tell them they have to go get a subpoena, um, because they're confidential. Um, and, but we, but we pretty much get a variety of everything. Um, this year, on the subpoena, on the incinerator subpoena that we've responded to, we searched with others every single building the city has records in, every storage unit. We've scanned and produced a hundred and ten boxes approximately of records. Um, the number of recordings that we have provided and will provide, take, are taking a total of about five months to copy electronically. Um, we've come and done that in half the budget we were given to do it. You know, if you councilor members, because of this incinerator case, what it was last year, there was a two-million-dollar allotment for it, so we're coming in, I think, just under a million with the last bills coming in for the year. So from our view, we've done it efficiently and carefully, and it yielded us a new attorney who works for us. So we're, we're very happy with, with how it's gone to date. Those matters are now in mediation for the second time. Uh, one was in November, the next one's in December, so we're hopeful that there's a resolution in the near future. Um, we can't guarantee it, but we're hopeful. Um, we have, uh, processed a hun- ninety-three separate pieces of legislation, which is actually sort of a slow year for us on legislation, but we have been working on detailed, complicated pieces of legislation on the code, updating the building and code, uh, which has been excruciating detail, trying to bring our city code into compliance with, the last time it was done, in total at one time was in two thousand and one. Um, we're trying to modernize it and working with codes. They're working with technology that put their folks out on the ground, and we're trying to create a document, you know, that, that will be interactive when we're done. But it's taken a lot of attention to detail because there had been, I think, a total of fifty amendments over twenty years, and we, we had to go back and unwind everything to see what they wanted to keep and what they wanted to lose. Um, there's other codes we're working on as well, um, and we're hoping to, to, to start the year off with substantial legislation that comes down to this council that's gonna take some real consideration and will impact people's lives for a long time. Um, you know, and we have a very good team working on it. Um, the, uh, litigation is starting to increase its volume, which is sort of a natural thing back to where it was pre-COVID. Um, the more activity city employees have, whether it's driving a vehicle, engaging in an arrest, um, you know, inspecting something, no matter what it is, there's more activity, there's more people on our property, there's more claims. That's just, that's just the reality of it. Um, those are, have been managed fairly well. Um, we are trying to assist as best we can on what is an enormous number of grant proj- related projects. They are, between, between the grants that we got through D C E D on federal money, um, which has five projects connected to it, and then the ARPA programs, there's just a lot to process in terms of bidding. We have the stadium on the legal side, we have the Broad Street Market, uh, which is very complicated now in both of its phases. Both the temporary building has turned out to be much more legally complicated than anyone anticipated. Um, and, you know, we're still working through that. That bid for electric and plumbing is going out now, uh, to deal with it. Originally, there was a lot of talk about volunteer work, which did happen, but it turned out a lot of the volunteers needed reimbursement for materials and things, which had to be publicly bid. And then some of them wanted to do a discount instead, which is great, but, but the law says we still have to publicly bid it. So we're, that's the process we're in. Uh, one of the questions to us was about the plan on the legal side. That, that plan for the big building is still in the mix. It was just released to the city a few weeks ago after the fire, um, and it is, it's got a lot of moving parts to it. Uh, there is, um, an exception in the law that is not very clear on historical structures, about whether, what codes it does and doesn't have to comply with. Um, but we have to make it ADA compliant now. We have to make it building code compliant now. Um, if we put HVAC in it, actual, actual air conditioning, there's no insurance coverage for that, um, because it, it wasn't what was there when it burned. Well, you know, if you remember, the system next door went up to five-point-five billion dollars before we were done. I don't know what the numbers would be. I don't think anyone in good faith could tell you the numbers for, for that kind of stuff for the main building. Um, so I, we'll, will have to be a multi-phase renovation. It just will. Um, and we're gonna be relying on, uh, Construction Management Company to, to lead the charge, which we've been working on, the scope of work for, to, to put out for, uh, bid to do that. We're gonna need architects that are on ground, we're gonna need engineers. The city's got tons of insurance to rebuild, but the insurance policy is a twenty-five-thousand-dollar limit on professional services. In my estimate, we're gonna spend no less than two and a half, three million dollars on professional services, so that money's gotta come from somewhere. Um, you know, so, and our job is to help find money with everybody else, you know, whether that's grant money, whether that's other things. Um, and we do, we do the bid packages with, uh, with Hillary and procurement. You know, we work on those, we work on the contracts, we work on the scopes and proposals. So there's a lot of very large, challenging things on the horizon for the city, um, but there are always these large, challenging things on the horizon for the city. That's, that's the reality of it. So, um, uh, so our goals for this year is to finish a few of the things that are long-hanging, including the incinerator litigation. including the incinerator litigation, there's a Comcast franchise agreement coming down that's overdue. There's gonna be a public hearing, it needs to happen on that sometime in the first quarter. The, let me see if we, we are hoping, we are going to hearings now on, we're still in the legal fight over the Public Works Building in eminent domain. There's a significant demand on the table for about twice of what we already paid, and we're going to hearings on that if we can't resolve it, and that is about to heat up again. The, is a final auction needed of city artifacts that came from our prior mayor. That's tasked to our office, it has not had a priority this year, but that has to happen, so, and we now have enough staff to do that. And we're hoping to double the amount of liens and collection agreements that we've entered into. Our, our lean specialist started in May 15th, our collections attorney started in October. By the end of this month, based on what we've already processed and will go into the court, we're gonna have a little over a million dollars in liens and agreements in place for the year. You know, and it's, it's a due process thing, there's notices that have to go out. Those notices either lead to an agreement or a lien, you know, for, for the people. And we're doing it in tranches based on how delinquent they are and how much money they owe us. You know, there is a large, 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 a few very large ones that we have not done liens for that are legally complicated in terms of ownership that we've been working on, and those will be filed in 2024. But some seem unresolvable, some point to the need to change some of the rules in Harrisburg for the way we do things. For example, the demo liens are, Mayor and I had a discussion a few weeks ago. We put a demo lien on a property that's now an empty lot, it's 30, 40, $50,000. No one will buy it because you have to put that up on top of the purchase price. And, you know, we need to change the rules that we have because those basically leave those properties abandoned until they end up not, you know, at judicial sale or on the repository. So that's the kind of legislation that we were discussing with the mayor, how to address that. And you have probably noticed you have prepared an awful lot of view, land, land use plans in the last four years that have not moved, and the question we're looking into, and that's about the economy, that's what that's about, the interest rates and the cost of materials. It was a one-two thing, whether the city is able, where some of them are too late to move forward under the law. And so we're, one of the issues we're examining is how to help those projects continue, which the councils had approved and the public had attended those hearings, but, but economics have just frozen in place, so. So that's a quick, what we're doing.
Thank you very much, you're doing a lot. I'd like to commend you and thank you for filling all of the, the positions in your office. I know you were on a very shoestring personnel the, the last year before, so I really appreciate that. It, it means a lot to the city because your office is integral in everything that happens in the city, so I appreciate that. I don't really have any questions for you, I'm going to open it up to my colleagues. I'll start to my far left with Councilman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you Solicitor Grover for being here this evening. As far as your new complement, how do you feel your new staff is working out for your office so far?
It, it seems to be working well. It, it's, we have very varied personalities, very varied experiences, and, you know, that adds to pretty much what you do every day. There's still a learning curve, right, which there just is, because the rules that govern cities are not intuitive. They're, they're, they're just not the same thing as other things in the state, so it takes a while for some of that stuff to become absorbed in what we do. And I think the hardest thing for everyone who comes in is that, that you do not know what is gonna be on your plate when you leave your house, by the time you get to your office every day in our office. So that, that changing of direction happens a lot. And I think that's the hardest challenge that, that people have to adjust to, that there's always four new things that popped up that need to be addressed, and, and that happens, it happens a lot.
And great-looking photo in the budget, by the way, great-looking team. And then, without releasing any sensitive information, are there any updates on Governor Square or any pertinent projects such as that throughout the city?
Sure, because it's a public process that's going on in the courtroom. Five bids were submitted to the, the company that was the court-approved as the entity to conduct a real estate auction. We were in talks yesterday with the attorneys for the city, the attorneys for the debtor, the realtors. There are three of the five that they consider substantial, they are all very different from each other, and so the administration is gonna meet with all three of them to go through the future. Right now, we have an approval that has to be secured by them to be the successful bidder. They have to get our approval and HUD's approval under the current order. So they're very anxious to sit down and talk to us, but they all have different philosophies about how this would work. One is a traditional public housing entity that does public housing. One is a large, multi-unit building owner for all over the place, including five large establishments in the city of Harrisburg, and the other is just in the real estate world and brings a lot of their own experience to the table. We're, we're very interested in how they project this will work for the two private entities, and they're all private, but two of them are really in the private renting, rental business more than the others are. But they've all had some experience in government money, it looks like, you know. It seems that one definitely did, the other does it all the time, the third, we're not quite sure. But two of the three do not have, at the moment, in their proposal, the use of any of the money available through the Housing Authority, through Pennsylvania Housing Finance Agency or through HUD. So we're very curious how they can put their money in and get a rate of return and fix everything if the rents are limited to a low and moderate income, which is really the magic question. But they all are confident that they can do this relatively fast to start in a phase. But the city is cautious, you know, we, we want someone who is not gonna come in here, be here for six months and sell and leave. You know, that's what we're, we're very cautious about.
Absolutely, and excuse my, I guess, lack of knowledge in law. What would, I heard you allude to kind of similar to like a housing authority coming to take over, that's one of the options. What would stop like the Harrisburg, HHA Housing Authority, from taking over and doing something similar?
I'm not a housing authority expert, but they are under funding formulas, where certain funding can't mix with other funding. So, but what they can do is, right now, you've offered the, you have Section 8 vouchers, right? And, and an individual family gets a Section 8 voucher and they get it through the Housing Authority in the city of Harrisburg. The housing authorities are also authorized to do something called project vouchers, which is, which they, they could do in an arrangement with this, not as the owner, but as participating in it. And that was one of the three pots of monies we, we were looking at, because they can take that to a bank and borrow against it, right? And it's a larger thing, but it's limited to the number of units it can be, it couldn't possibly be the whole property. So there's a lot of fairly detailed pieces they'd have to have. So that is one form of public financing that there's at least not being used, that in theory could be used for this project. There is Pennsylvania Housing Finance, Finance Authority does tax credits, you know, and they have, there is a tax credit application process. That for this year, already the pre-application was in November. One of the three has already done a pre-application in anticipating and putting a bid in, so, which you can do. You don't have to be the current owner in, in that structure. And they did that with the assistance of the Housing Authority, by the way, that's my understanding. And the third is HUD money, and HUD, the hard question for HUD is they already funded this once for a complete renovation 20-some years ago, and they supposedly don't go backwards. You know, and it's unclear to me, there is some discussion that there is this pot of money available to certain types of entities like the Housing Authority or the Redevelopment Authority that is non-competitive money for these upgrades or, or stabilizations, but we're, we're not there yet and we're never able to get there because we didn't have a new owner. So the, the new owner is gonna matter a lot, it's gonna open a lot of doors.
And my final question for you, Solicitor Grover, would be, looking at 2024, what would be one of your larger legal, let's say, challenges coming up that you have your eyes on right now?
There's a lot.
Yeah.
Getting, getting a coherent, compliant structure of bids for the Broad Street Market is complicated. We are behind on the stadium and that's, and the people can blame my office for that, but that, we are not in the stadium business. You know, getting to a scope of work that made sense, engineering and using what Major League Baseball is, but we believe, based on the nature of it, that it can still be finished on the target time, which is the spring of 2025. But those are just going out now. The, the, the construction manager, we had to modify a construction manager because they already have an engineer on site. Normally, the construction manager would bring one in, that changes how you finance it, it changes how you pay for it. And so we can't do the same type for Broad Street Market and the stadium. But those are, getting those done and keep them moving is tough. I've had some very tough negotiations and, and frankly, I was a pain in the ass with the school district today about the pool. You know, my view is if they want the pool, here are the keys, I'll, I'll get them from public, you know, and they can have them. We've had the only people that possess that pool since it was built in 1968. One of the mayors had it built in 1968. How the school district owns it and we have it, I, I can't find enough history to tell me or explain it, but the school district owns the real estate, and we had, we've, we've been there with an expired lease for more than 10 years, which basically it's a holdover lease. The lease was fiction, when you read what it says, it, it made no sense. It was a very feel-good document by a lot of people that, all these people are gonna do nice things in the city of Harrisburg. But we have that issue, we have Hall Manor Pool as an issue. It turned out that some typo in the county courthouse on parcel number or something took a little square piece out there of Hall Manor Pool, which was the playground, and sold it at a tax sale. Which they had no right to sell it because it wasn't a taxable property because it belonged to the city of Harrisburg. But unwinding stuff like those kind of problems are much easier said than done. And when you're doing projects, that's the kind of stuff that we get to, but that happened a long time ago, and, you know, and as we're trying to put grant money into it and show what title is, that's where these kind of problems come up. And everyone who knew about them way back when are long gone.
What pool does the city, the, the district own, the school district?
They own Jackson Lick, the real estate, the Jackson Lick is placed on, yeah.
Okay, thank you, no further questions.
Thank you, Councilwoman Daniels, any questions or comments?
Just one question, if you don't mind giving me a sense of like what percentage of your budget the Office uses on Human Relations Commission work?
I, I don't have, it's very little because, I mean, I think we probably had six or eight this year, right? Complaints, and I think all but one were from out of town. So, you know, it's basically me or I, I sign it to someone to look into it and do a response letter. The response letters are kind of formal, I mean, they're pre, you know, there's a form letter. So this is the first one we have to do an investigation on that came in recently, but we haven't had to do one this year otherwise.
And then for the commission itself to meet, like, did they?
The commission, so, so that ordinance was being renegotiated to be rewritten, and it sort of fell to the wayside. But the ordinance as it exists right now, and I don't know why it's written the way it's written, requires that they can't meet if they don't have a quorum. Like, it actually has it directly in there. And so they can't even call a meeting because they have, don't have enough people to have a quorum right now. So the, the, one of the pieces of legislation we hope to bring down early in the year is, is make, turning that piece of legislation to exist into some common sense functioning, you know, that will allow it to be filled like we do other boards and, and keep going like it does other boards. But under, as, as it's written right now, it, it just doesn't work. And there's been, there was a lot of very deep, well-thought-out discussion from the board members about how they would like to see it changed, and then it just sort of fell to the wayside. But, you know, basically, our office cannot be, which I, I had pointed out, we cannot be the recording secretary of the board, we cannot be the entity that mans that board, we have enough on our plate and we cannot do it. You know, and that was where it got down to with, I think it was me and just Stephen here last year. And that was like, we, we just, we just can't do that for you. And so we, we just, that's responsibility, it's beyond, being the people that take the minutes and do the, do the exhibits and put together the agendas for every hearing, that's outside what we are willing to do.
Thank you, Councilwoman Majors, any questions or comments?
I guess the one comment which was already made is, I'm glad that you guys are staffed up. It's important that the city has a, a active Law Bureau and it's great news to hear that, you know, the folks that we hired to do the lean work are actually being able to go after delinquent, some of our very delinquent folks that are, are delinquent with liens and, and own property taxes and whatever the case may be. With respect to trash, where are we on some of the delinquent trash billings that we've had? And has?
That is mostly what they spend their time doing is, is the trash bills. You know, the other ones that are, they also work on all the resolutions, like when someone sells a property, they wanna pay off the liens, they work out the documentation for that. There's a lot of transfers of property in Harrisburg going on, there have been for the last few years. And so those trigger, you know, transaction. The, some of the data in the city's old system, you know, which I think I've been candid about, is, is not reliable. So we always have to go in and sort of really peel it back and see, do these codes make sense? Was there a building here, was there trash? If there wasn't trash, was it subject to the ready-to-serv fee? That's the kind of detail you gotta pull apart for some of these accounts. And some of the counts, we just can't even make sense of. We have the, all of these accounts on this spreadsheet that, that they keep that have no owner or property number that seems to be connected to it that are sitting there. So when you see these monies that are owed, it's very unclear. Now, we know how some of it, I think, happened when you informally combine your parcels. It used to be each of your parcels got a bill, the county will informally consolidate without a lot consolidation and put it all under one parcel number, or sometimes Public Works did that in the past. So then you have these other things hanging in the background that no longer have a parcel number, but had a bill that was never paid. But trying to trace those things is, is very challenging. And, you know, and we are not, we are not the financial folks, you know, we, we, we rely on the data and what evidence actually exists in the system that the money is owed. So, but that, when I say there's a million dollars, all of that is trash.
Okay, the, the other question I'll follow up on, right, it's a little more detailed, but it has to go back to when you're talking about all the, the realty transfers that occur, us trying to figure out a way to coordinate better with, with the county. Because, again, you know, we're all aware of all the, the real estate transfers that go on in the city that are, it's, it's mind-boggling how much, how, how often properties switch hands.
And so there is a, there is an IT PDF report that comes, I forget if it's once a week, that whatever the county turned over to them changed hands. And sometimes that list just goes on and on and on. Someone, we have to get more attention paid to how to process it into the system. We have the data and we know how to send real estate tax bills out on it, but how we, how that integrates with everything else is, is a systems question and a business question, I think, the model on how to do it.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Thank you, President Bowers, any questions or comments?
I don't have any questions, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Lawson, any questions or comments?
No questions, thank you very much.
Thank you, and Councilwoman Rawls, any questions or comments?
Thank you, Vice President Green, and I'm so glad, Solicitor Grover, you met your goal of getting your department fully staffed. I think that's an excellent goal that you had and to see you accomplish it, thank you for that. Because the Law Bureau is so important within our city, so I welcome all the new staff members we have in the Law Bureau. I had one question, excuse my ignorance for it, but I seen it in the budget and I wondered myself, so I figured if I did, I'm sure residents did too. It was a stenographer, I saw that went up, stenograph, sorry.
Stenographer.
That was different for me, so.
So the stenographer is a court reporter.
Okay.
And so they cover the hearings that we do, and we do a bunch of hearings. And there was an issue in this past year where some old stenographer bills from, I think, a new employee didn't get processed elsewhere. And because literally we rely on them, we used our city, our budget to make sure they all got paid because they could just refuse to come back. And we use them for all the zoning hearings, we use them for some of the disciplinary hearings, we use them for the Civil Service Commission, some of the city council meetings when there's like a street vacation. So they have to be, like, we have to have them.
Yes.
And, and the cost, like everything else, has gone up for them to show up, so.
So that's why the cost went up, okay, thank you. Thank you for, for explaining that, I learn something new every day, thank you very much. That's it for me.
Thank you, any other questions or comments? Singnan, thank you for being here tonight, because you're always here, but thank you for being here still. Thank you for your overview and presentation. I guess we'll move on to the next bureau, which will be the Bureau of Human Resources. Good evening.
Good evening.
If you could just introduce yourself, give a little overview, and then if there were any questions that were already sent to you, if you could go over those, and then we'll open it up for questions.
I'm Joanie Willingham, I'm the HR Director here at the city. Questions, some of the questions I got did not pertain to. Questions, some of the questions I got did not pertain to HR, but I did send the responses back to budget. So... And they had to do with the, some questions about the recycling coordinator, the position. And I think you did forward them on to council. The list of salaries for the department directors and deputy directors. I sent a list, a spreadsheet to the finance director. There was questions about those positions that had a pay increase of more than the 2%. And I sent the ones that I saw in the budget. I think everything else was addressed by them.
If you wouldn't mind actually going over the questions. Do you have a copy of them, or do you need us to provide that?
What was sent to me was the solid waste and recycling manager position that isn't funded in the host municipality fee fund moved to another place? Or is it unfunded? And from what I'm reviewing it, there were two positions, one full-time and one part-time. The full-time recycling coordinator was approved in Neighborhood Services, which is now, though, in the host fee. And then there was a part-time recycling coordinator that was unfunded in the host fee. And that's because John Rarick retired, and they did not fill it. It requested a list of the salary of every department director and deputy director. I sent a spreadsheet to finance outlining all of those, all the managers. And then I sent a list of the top 15 salaries and the positions of those management personnel. And then there were, are there any positions that have pay increases of more than 2%? I looked through the budget that was presented and pulled out all of the ones that I saw that were more than 2%.
Thank you. And then I believe those were provided to us as a link, but the link will not let us click the link. So is there a way that we can get those printed out so we can have a copy of them and actually review over them?
Yeah, so you should have also received them via email. It would have been at like 5:15, right before I had come down.
Thank you. I don't have any questions at the moment for your department, so I'll open it up to my colleagues with questions. I'll start to my far right this time with Councilwoman Rawls.
Thank you, Vice President Green, and thank you for coming down, Mrs. Willingham. I appreciate your attendance here and all the work that you do for the city. I don't have any questions, but thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Lawson?
Thank you, Vice President Green, and thank you for coming before us. I'm going to make it very easy because I do not have any questions at this moment either.
Okay. Thank you. President Bowers?
Good evening. I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Councilman Majors?
Thank you. One question I have, and I don't expect you to have the answer right now. So if you can get it back to us and write it. I know in the past we've got, made requests for city, a breakdown of city employees by, if they are residents of the city versus non-residents. Just, you know, big numbers, as well as if we can get some additional breakdown. So, you know, how many African-Americans, how many minorities versus that work for the city? Just so we get a better sense of, you know, the folks that are serving our community.
Sure.
All right. Thank you.
Councilwoman Daniels?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Joni, for joining us this evening. I have no questions. Keep up the great work.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I do have two questions, which I just asked of all departments. If you can provide your 2024 departmental goals and measures of success for these goals, if applicable.
So let me start with the 2023 accomplishments.
All right. That was going to be my second question. I know backwards, but still. Thank you.
So we became fully staffed August 1st of 2023. We were down two staff members for most of the year. Over the past few months, it's been considerably a lot of training and familiarizing the two new people with city policies and procedures. Both of them are from the private sector, and their knowledge and experience is limited when it comes to municipal government and working with bargaining units. During this time period, though, we've been able to eliminate an excessive amount of paper, paper files that are way past their retention date. I found a file of an employee who was born in 1914. So we eliminated boxes of files. We went through them, and we took them and we had them shredded. We also reorganized our office a little more. So by looking at having two HR specialists that kind of ran over top of each other. So what we did was made one an HR specialist and one an HR generalist. The HR specialist oversees recruitment and onboarding for bargaining unit employees, whereas the generalist is learning things from each person, including the benefits administrator, the payroll manager. She will assist all of us with certain aspects of our job, which helps us. We began researching policies to update because a lot of our policies were outdated. Our benefits administrator was able to take time out to start healthy initiatives, where she did seminars and training. We had speakers come in. We had work lunches, lunch and learn about health. We were able to do some management training when it came to drug and alcohol, drug and alcohol reasonable suspicion training. And a lot of our employees are training on a regular basis for Munis and migration next year. What our goals are for next year are to continue with cross-training so that we have supporting staff that if someone's not, you know, not in or taking a vacation, we don't have to reach out to them if something occurs. We've also wanted to continue policy reviews and updates. We want to increase our workplace efficiency. And we want to reach out and provide more additional training, not just to management, but bargaining unit when it comes to safety, policies and procedures. And we have to continue to prepare for our migration for, hopefully, next year, where we can eliminate the paper process because everything is paper still in our office. From the time you come onboard to changing addresses, everything, you have to fill out a piece of paper. So hopefully, this will be eliminated next year.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Are there any questions? One last call. Councilman Rodriguez?
Maybe I may misunderstand from last budget season. How long do you think it would take for maybe the building or just your department to be fully embedded into the new system? So we're not doing things paper handwritten, et cetera?
Yeah.
Got you. Okay. That would be great.
It's been a slow progress, but we've been doing a lot of training. A lot of it is payroll-related so far, and not so much the regular onboarding. But a lot of it's been payroll and benefits.
Okay. And I know it's not you specifically or your department. It's just, I just remember or recall, you know, once we get this new system up, we'll be, you know. So I'm still looking forward to that.
Waiting for that. If you saw the boxes in our office. And we're also looking at imaging a lot of the things that we do have.
Okay.
Because rules have changed on how long you keep police officer files. You have to retain them longer.
Do you still retain them in your office?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Saying none, thank you very much for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your department does as well.
Thank you.
Up next, we have the Bureau of Financial Management.
Good evening, Honorable President Bowers and Chair Green, Vice President. I'm grateful to be here today and discuss the Department of Budget and Finance. And I'd like to start, if you don't mind, with our goals. They'll dovetail into also the accomplishments because many of them are carried over from prior year. But I think that the whole concept of goals, objectives, strategic planning, and performance metrics is really crucial to the city. And I hope that we are, hopefully, in finance, able to begin to further emulate that as we move into 2024. I know it's very important, based on your EPR system, that we were able to execute this year. And one of the things that we plan for the budget next year is to do a test pilot of performance management and measurements with measurement indicators and benchmarking against cities our size in Pennsylvania. Those pilot departments are public safety departments, largely because the police department has excellent uniform crime statistics. And as part of their certification as a certified police department, which Harrisburg is very proud of, they have terrific productive data already. And secondarily, as you know, Chief Enterline from the fire department, he has excellent performance data as well. And again, they have a different type of tracking for fire and mostly dealing with life property and quality of life and so forth. But nonetheless, those are two departments that I think would be excellent to pilot. It's difficult to just try to rule it out overall for every department the first year. So I think it's best to use those departments that already have terrific statistical data and productivity data that will be useful to the mayor and city council as we move forward into 2024. As I mentioned, our goals at the department include a continuation of the implementation of the migration to Tyler Technology. It's been a bit of a challenge, but also a great success in the sense that now you have, as council members, excellent financial management data at your fingertips and reporting at your fingertips. And we'd be happy to provide training to you, if you'd like, for profit and loss statements, which we call revenue and expenditure reports in government, balance sheet reports, any of these reports you'd be interested in. They're readily available to you, and we can even preset them up so you can run them monthly if you wish. The general ledger system has been able to move aggressively into accounting, auditing, budgeting, and financial reporting. It did help us with the audit this year because we were able to pull some of the historical data without great difficulty, given the fact that Brian and Mr. Bortner spent painless hours putting in the fiscal data for budget and for actuals for 2020, 2021, 2022, 2023. And of course, 23 is the current year, and 2024 is the budget. So that data is, again, also available to you and very useful. And we also use it in the ICA report, as you had mentioned earlier. The next process then in Munis is the capital fixed asset and inventory system. And this is engaged on the calendar for full implementation by March 31st, 2014. As Mr. Hartman mentioned, we have been very fortunate to find a consultant for the capital improvement program, which is a five-year historical program that will provide an excellent secondary document to you from a budgetary standpoint. You'll have an operating budget, and you'll have a capital budget. And that will be most useful to you. Now, the thing that's a surprise to you is it's Reynolds Site Logic IQ. Does that name sound familiar to you? Because they are housed right here in Harrisburg, and they have made major investments into Harrisburg. And they have a terrific software that can tell us, when they come in this room, they can tell you the oxygen level, the heat, the sound. And it's just a marvelous software. So, and they are so thrilled to be working with us because, again, they have made terrific investments into the city. So I think it's going to be a terrific return on our investment. Councilman, Vice President Green, I think you'll be thrilled that you'll have a product in your fingertips before you go on break in June. The capital improvement study will be in your hand by that time. And then in December, we'll have it as part of your budget. Also, the city auditors, Boyer and Ritter, will be conducting two audits this year. 2022, which we anticipate to have completed in early spring, and the 2023, which we hope to have completed by September. With those two audits, we are able to get back on track with our normal auditing system, and we're able to stay current. So I think you'll be very thrilled that we're able to give you the type of auditing information that you need on a much more timely basis. The department also continues to provide Commonwealth Court reports to the Department of Community and Economic Development, the Act 47 Strong Plan. It's financial reporting and operational reporting that we provide quarterly, usually two weeks after the close of each quarter, to Ms. Madger Clay, who is the City Harrisburg Recovery Coordinator. In addition to that, the department has and will continue to provide an update of the financial management reporting for the city of Harrisburg. It's a five-year financial management plan that we present to the ICA each year. And that is submitted in April to the General Assembly, the governor in the General Assembly, excuse me. And then in August, we do a more further update for August 31st. And that was just recently adopted, if you recall, in October. And then, of course, one of the greatest challenges we're going to have in 2024 is our programmatic reporting that is required to the ARPA plan. Now that you have adopted your plan and we're starting to roll major programs out, there'll be much, much, much more significant quarterly reporting that is required. Again, it's usually due about two weeks after each quarter ends. In addition to that, I think you know that the grants operation is actually under our umbrella. And I can't say enough about the terrific work we've done there, predominantly Rebecca Volmer, who's sitting over there. I think my last count, she has 97 grants on her spreadsheet. She has over $30 million in one year, 2024. So here's a few, just to name a few. I think maybe even Neil named a few. The CDBGCV, which was 13 million. We're working regularly with Dowood and Civitas to make sure we're following all federal and state standards. The PCCD grants, those have been a heavy lift, but we believe a good return on the investment in terms of gun violence and other related issues. The DCNR Shoots and Ladders has been terrific. Our collaboration with CAGA has been terrific. DCD's multimodal for the East-West Connection, which of course is Walnut and Chestnut Street. And also the DCD multimodal for the Federal Courthouse Extension. They're calling it the Urban Meadow because they're actually extending kind of a soft walking path for those who live in that community. The Rackby for the Mulder Square and the Rackby for the FNB Field. And then, of course, we spent an enormous amount of time with the 70 applications that were approved by the mayor for the gaming grant for 2023. And we anticipate an even more robust participation in 2024. Those are pretty much my goals and objectives. I don't think there were a lot of specific questions that I had to answer, but I'd be happy to field any questions you would like.
Thank you for your presentation. Thank you for your goals. They're robust, and I look forward to seeing you accomplish those and working with you. I'm going to open it up to my colleagues. I'll come back to my questions towards the end. I'm going to start to my far, I think I'm to my far left this time, with Councilman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Director Kelly, for joining us this evening. More of a statement than a question. You had mentioned that you wouldn't mind providing training for like balance sheets, profit and loss statements. I'm not, I mean, I'm just speaking for myself. It would be great to see a collaboration with like Economic Development to maybe provide that for residents or small businesses on the rise. That would probably be phenomenal to see, but definitely appreciate the offer.
Well, this is for the city's finances, the portion I was, not to say that that's not.
I'm interested in general. It'd be great from, you know, your team. That would be phenomenal.
But Munis provides those reports to you. So thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilwoman Daniels says she does not have any questions, so we will go to Councilman Majors.
Thank you. I'll have a follow-up in writing. No question right now, but.
Thank you. President Bowers?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Lawson?
Thank you.
Thank you. No questions at this time. Thanks.
Thank you.
And Councilman Ross.
Thank you, Vice President Green, and thank you for joining us, Ms. Kelly, and for your robust goals. I also look for, I also look forward to you and your department accomplishing them. I just have one question. I know earlier the mayor had said all of any directors with increases more than 2%, I believe, she said, was corrected. So I had noticed in the budget, the director planning still had about a 10% increase. And I was just wondering if that just wasn't corrected yet, or is that staying as a 10% increase?
Yes, sir. Mr. Brooks will handle that.
Yes, that is going to stay at that percentage.
Okay, so I guess the next question would be for the administration on why that the department director would be getting a 10% increase. So I don't know if anybody from the administration is here to answer that, though.
Well, I know that I had some discussions with the mayor. I can't speak for the mayor or the administration, but I know that that the planning director, Mr. Jeffrey Knight, had been performing a number of tasks. He's the director, but I think he didn't have an assistant director, so he was doing that task. I don't know if you know this, but he's also the floodplain manager for the city. He's also the historic preservation person for the city. So I can't speak for the mayor, but I do know that there that his his salary structure, if you compare him to other planners throughout the Commonwealth or throughout the region, I mean, the North Atlantic region. So that could have been the rationale, but I can't speak entirely for them. But I just know that that would be some of the rationale if I won't be so bold as to suggest that.
Okay, maybe he's absorbing the 2% for everybody that would staff his office. I'm just, I don't, you know. I would want to, yes, is there any way we could get that in like writing to say what her? I thank you for your further explaining that.
And I guess it's a little bold of me because.
No, it wasn't both of you. I mean, that's that's kind of what you, when you do add up the positions that should be in his office, like maybe he absorbs everybody's percentage into his, but then at the same time.
We'll get a clear, very clear answer for you.
Yes, just so we know why, because, you know, we do want everyone to have deserved salaries, but also be fair across the board in a way.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Majors.
Yeah, still have a follow-up in writing, but just wanted to touch on a couple of things here. All right, there we go. With respect to in your budget on page 76, the web services, the web and software services, there's a significant increase. Can you speak to?
That's largely the Reynolds IQ.
Oh, that's the Reynolds. Okay, okay.
Yeah, and they actually came in at one of the lower. When we bid it out, we had six people interviewed, three in finalist positions. And and the software is actually free this first year. Now, that doesn't mean there won't be a cost for that software that I explained earlier, but but that's largely the the reason for that.
Okay. All right, that's it for now. Thanks.
Thank you. I do have a few questions. First, I'll go through mine that were were on the, that I sent in earlier that the answer wasn't provided for. Let's see here. There was question 11. It was the social security that's being paid out of the liquid fuel fund.
Oh, that was an error. That was an erroneous page. I'm sorry. I meant to put that in writing, and I didn't. But that's been deleted. There is no position, so there would be no social security.
Okay, thank you. And then also line account number 352000 was just a question on why it increased so much.
Yeah, it's one answer. It's the feds. The feds increased interest rates significantly last year for borrowing. The the beauty of that sometimes is it also increased it for the investor. And so and not only that, but because we have this major project at I-83 going on, there was a significant amount of income coming from that. And so we were very lucky that that was as robust. And and believe me, almost every finance director in in the United States is thanking the Lord for for increased interest rates in terms of investment.
Okay, thank you very much. We did get the list of all of the department director and deputy director salaries. Let's see here. Just trying to go through them to make sure nothing's missed here.
And anything I need to follow up with, I'd be happy to. If you need additional information, I'd be very happy to do that.
Thank you. I believe we did get all of the position control pages and the new update.
Yes, and we did add the one for neighborhood services today.
Thank you. All right, I think that's all from the the questions that were asked beforehand. I do have a question, just comparing the the projections from the five-year plan revenue to the projection in this budget revenue. I did see there was an increase of about $4.5 million in the revenue projections. Could you just kind of go over your thought process? What what caused this increase? As we're looking at some things that could actually cause a decrease in revenue.
Yeah, absolutely. One of the things that you have entitled me with is to sit on the Duffin County Tax Collection Committee. And I actually speak with the Keystone Tax Collection every quarter. And they were willing to do a separate analysis for the city on how well our EIT is anticipated to come in in the coming year. And so the one wonderful thing that's happened is that there is more robust growth in the city than sometimes it appeared. But that number doesn't go up, you know, just serendipitously. It goes up for for very distinct reasons. And so you have encouraged business in the community. You have encouraged development. You see the mayor has five, and yourself, have five major development plans. So I think the EIT will continue. Does everybody agree with how much robust? But that's the reason why we asked Keystone to do a separate evaluation for us. They've even offered to come here and do that same evaluation. Now, they would have to do it online because they're in Irwin, but they'd be happy to do that. Also, that dovetails with some of the other taxes, the local services tax. Again, you may not see the robustness, but there is an absolute significant robust activity going in, going on in your downtown. We're looking at a possible another hotel. We're looking at, you know, some things really positive. And and the nightlife is still very vibrant. So I think those are certainly some good, good signs of improvement in the economy. I I think we can thank the President of the United States, Joe Biden, for his direction that he's given and improved the economy. I I know oftentimes he doesn't get credit, but if you look at the real economic statistics for the United States of America, they've become very significant in the last 12 months.
Thank you very much. I'm not going to go through every every line here and the difference. That's something I kind of can can talk with you a little later about and get a better understanding of compared to the five-year plan. There was one question that I did miss that was asked beforehand, which is, does this budget anticipate the need to use any fund balance?
As of this date, no. We actually have a slight surplus. I won't say it's enormous, but we do have a surplus. And you can see that in the numbers that Mr. Brian McCutcheon showed you in terms of the appropriations and the resources and appropriations. It's very clear. I think it's in the very front of your book under Revenue Summary.
Yes.
It's like right after the, right after the introduction, there's a very detailed schedules that tell you exactly what the appropriations and the revenue, the revenues and expenditures are. And you can see that there's a slight, not significant, but a slight surplus in this year's budget. That means revenues exceed expenditures.
All right, I don't have any further questions at the time. Are there any other questions from my colleagues?
Sorry, I just had one more, maybe for either Marina or Brian. And I apologize if I missed this earlier when the overview was going on, on the state liquid fuels proposed reduction. It's about $900,000, it looks like, versus what was adopted in '23, which was being proposed for this year. Explain why there's, yeah, if you can explain.
I can, I can take a closer look at that, but I want to say we had some significant streets and roads projects that occurred this year, current year. Namely, what comes to mind is the Second Street project.
Allison Hill.
No, I'm sorry. It was the Seventh Street project, which was completed earlier this year. There was a cost overrun on that project with the contractor, and we had to, the contract was amended, and that was fine, but there was additional funding that needed to be utilized. And we requested that of PennDOT for permissible expenditure through the state liquid fuels fund, and they were, they were fine with that. And then there were some paving initiatives done earlier. Marina mentioned Allison Hill, that we utilize state liquid fuels for that purpose. So there was an increase in expense in 2023. So that is not anticipated, if I'm following you, not as much of an expense weight for 2024.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Saying none. Thank you all for being here tonight. I appreciate the hard work you do. I appreciate you giving us this updated budget book and a nice little binder. And I look forward to working with you, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Honorable President Bowers and Chair Green. I very much appreciate your time. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, we have the Bureau of Information Technology. Good evening. If you could introduce yourself, give us a little overview of your department, and then start with any of the questions that were previously asked, and then we'll open the floor up for questions.
Thank you. Good evening, City Council, for the second night in a row. I'm Steve Bortner, IT Director. With me is Nathan Grunbein, our Deputy Director. I'm going to go through the 2023 accomplishments. Nathan's going to go through the 2024 objectives, and then we'll open it up for for questions. So from a staffing standpoint, as of right now, we're down one position. As of January 16th, 2024, the GIS administrator position will be filled, so we'll be fully staffed again, which is a good thing. As far as 2023 accomplishments, we implemented the financials phase of Munis, which you've heard quite a bit about tonight. So throughout the year, we provided post-implementation support and any training that any of the users needed throughout the year. As far as the migration project, we continued working on implementation activities for the human capital management phase and the tax billing phase. Both of those are scheduled to be implemented in 2024. We also began implementation activities on licenses, permits, and codes enforcement, as well as asset maintenance. And both of those are scheduled to be implemented in 2024 as well. As you know, we had water damage on the lower level earlier this year, and we successfully migrated our mainframe computing and storage capacity to an external data center. And then also, we completed a cybersecurity assessment with the Pennsylvania National Guard. We got a report out of that. We started to work on implementing some of the recommendations that they provided to us. We also implemented a new file, network file system backup for enhanced protection of cybersecurity attacks. So that was a recent accomplishment. We had, in early 2023, we implemented a new help desk taking system that's used by all city employees. We began the implementation of the core switch replacement that's going to eliminate some aging hardware and the single point of failure for the entire network throughout the city. And then finally, we implemented endpoint and identity security system that provides stronger antivirus and malware protection and constantly monitors the dark web for compromised user accounts.
Thank you for having us here tonight. Our goals for 2024, we have several of them. For Munis, we are going to complete the implementation of the tax billing phase of the migration project, complete the implementation of human capital management, and also licensing permit codes and codes enforcement. Then we will begin the implementation activities for the utility building phase of billing phase of the migration project. One of our big initiatives for next year, and this is across multiple bureaus and offices in the city, is to start the digitalization of all of our paper so that we can reduce our footprint here, get everything, all of our records online that we can quickly search and find what we are looking for without having to pull out old paper files. So that that's going to be multi-pronged. We're looking to work with codes, the Department of, I'm sorry, the Police Department with the Record Management Department and other. Those are the first two that are going to start out, and then branch out to like HR, legal, everybody else, so we can get everything online. We look to finally establish our secondary and secondary and disaster recovery data center located at Aaron Johnson Building. This will give us the ability to continue operations, given if there's a hardware failure here, network outages, anything like that, or in case there's a natural disaster and for some reason we would need to shut down operations in this building. Also, replace our aging and losing sand equipment, our storage area network, which houses all of the data and servers for our systems. We are losing support on that in October 2024. And we are looking to implement a new system that will provide us with faster access to our equipment and also give us a more scalable solution for the future without greater capital expense of having to replace it every five years or so when we lose support. We are also looking to finally replace the UPS or uninterrupted power supply that was installed in 1987 in the data center. The unit looks like it came out of something from the Apollo mission series, and we need to get that to a more energy-efficient unit that would be reliable for our systems moving forward. We're also looking to implement, continue our cybersecurity initiatives by implementing multi-factor authentication or moving to a password, passwordless authentication for all city employees, which will help us avoid any cybersecurity attacks. We're also, per the recommendations of that National Guard assessment, looking to implement 802X network authentication, which would identify unknown devices and block them from accessing our resources. Another recommendation would also to be implement a networking, network monitoring solution to detect intrusions and suspicious activity. And then finally, the last initiative is to continue streamlining our help desk operations to better serve the city employees, help with onboarding, offboarding, and make our jobs a little bit easier by collecting the appropriate data so that we can get things back working or help our our user base get back to operations quicker.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. I don't have any questions at the moment, so I'm going to open it up to my colleagues. Start with my far right, with Councilman Ross.
Thank you, Vice President Green, and thank you both for being here tonight and for your help. And as I could hear in your goals and your expectations, you have a lot set out, you know, for the city. I know we're not, I'm sure, the only municipal city a little bit behind in technology, but I know we're trying to get it better. And I think we're all just ready for that one day, where it's just this big boom of, okay, we're where we need to be. But I do know that takes time, so I don't have any questions. Just wanted to thank you for what you do and the goals that you have set for us.
Thank you. Councilman Lawson.
Thank you, Vice President Green. And I want to echo what Councilwoman Ross has said. You know, it's exciting to see the progress that's that's happening and looking forward to to seeing where we are in 2024, 2025. Thanks.
Thank you. President Bowers.
I don't have any questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Majors.
Thank you. Guess with respect to the GIS position, you said it will be filled at the beginning of next year. Did we have, did we have someone in in that position previously?
We did have somebody, but they left, I believe it was in September. So we've been looking since then, and the person is.
looking since then. And the person is moving from Pittsburgh back to this area. She was originally from here, so in order to wrap up what she was working on and move here and get situated, she figured it would be better to start after the first of the year. So, that's why she's not starting earlier.
All right. Okay. No problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Daniels says she has no questions. Councilman Rodriguez.
Good evening. Thank you for joining us. As always, a lot of my questions were geared towards the National Guard's recommendations, and you definitely went over a few, so thank you for being proactive and jumping right on that. The other one, as you guys know, I've been bringing you my personal laptop since I was elected. Maybe that could be on a side note, though, but I would love to just be able to open it and use it. And I don't mean just your traditional gotta change password every something, something. There's just something going on where I just don't have the ability to use it when I really need to. So, any help would be great. Keep up the great work. Thank you, gentlemen. Yeah.
Thank you. I don't have any further questions. If no one else has any further questions, thank you for being here tonight. We appreciate all that you do to keep the city working. And last but not least, tonight, we have the Bureau of Grants. All right. Well, in light of, of her running to the bathroom, I'm going to request that we have a five-minute recess, so that we all can stretch our legs a little bit before we close it out for the night. All right. So we'll have a five-minute recess. Thank you. That appreciated. Up next, we have the Bureau of Grants. If you could introduce yourself, give us a brief overview, and then go over the questions that were asked beforehand, and then we'll open it up for questions.
Okay. Sounds great. I'm Rebecca Volmer. I'm the Director of the Grants Bureau. And I think the first question that you have to ask yourself is where I'm gonna be hibernating this winter, because apparently, according to my photo, I've been collecting acorns in my cheeks for about, about three months now. Anyway, sorry. Thank you so much for letting me be here and talk to you guys, and it's, it's really always wonderful to see you. And it's always amazing to me how much effort and time and passion you, you all put into this, because it's, I know it's not easy. In any case, so I was, I was asked to respond to questions nineteen and twenty, which were, you know, what am I thinking about for 2024, and what am I looking back at on 2023? I'd like to start with 2023, if that's okay. So, I'm actually gonna go back. One quick step before that was 2022, where there was just so much federal funding coming down, as you guys all know, and the city was able to go out and, as, in teams. It wasn't me, it was myself and everyone else around the city, every other department, going after different federal funding for different city projects, all the different kind of like, subject matter experts coming together, contributing. So we ended up winning a bunch of grants, more than we were expecting. So, we have about fifteen grants in total. It's fourteen, but one of the, that thirteen million dollar grant has been split in two now, because Jackson Lake is not on the same pace as the other three parks. So that is wonderful for 2022, but that's kind of, and I think people think, oh, that's great. We got this money. That's terrific. Now we're done. It's actually really where it starts. So, 2023, the main challenge for 2023 has been, we have to actually bring all these things onboard, and do all the contracting and putting them in paper, like papering them is, is the term that is used, which means a lot of review and process through the Law Bureau and Council, a lot of documents that need to be signed. So it's, there's just been a lot of work done to get, to make sure that we are bringing these things onboard, so we actually capture this money. And it's not just sort of, oh, it's an award, you didn't do what you were supposed to do, and now you don't have the money anymore. So that was a lot of 2023, in addition to just sort of, you know, the general management of grants that we already have in-house. And our grants range from five thousand dollars for benches in Italian Lake, to thirteen million to, for the parks project for CDBGCV. So a lot of 2023 was just kind of trying to wear both of those hats and bring everything in and, and collected. The special emphasis, I would say again, is really to just make sure that we have the, all of these grants in-house, onboard, in compliance, everything calendared, our liaisons at our granting agencies secure. And there was a lot of training that needed to, that I felt needed to be done for myself anyway, to make sure that we were complying, especially with CDBGCV HUD, DCED requirements. So that was a lot of 2023. Twenty twenty-four, looking forward to 2024, there, I guess, two things I'm really looking at. One is that, as we all know, it's an election year, and there's still a lot of federal money out there, and it may not be out there anymore after 2024. So, I've been trying to focus hard on federal funding, but I feel like my main, main goal for, for 2024 is to focus much harder on that, and make sure we don't miss out on anything that is there, that may not, who knows what's gonna happen, but may not be there in 2025, 2026. There's also the hope that we can bring someone onboard as an assistant grant manager, and there's a lot of training that would be involved there, especially helping that person work with the public safety grants, which I think is the direction that they would wanna go. So there's just a lot of, it's both like little, small things, like this is the website and web portal that you need to use, and these are the dates that you need to calendar. But also, here are the bigger research goals that you would want to be looking at if you're trying to increase that funding. I mean, part of the thing with grants is that once you get one, it's like a foothold, and you're always trying to make sure that you get the next one from that same agency, if you can, or at least create those relationships, so that when the next thing comes along, you're, you're well sort of situated, and you've done a good job with grants you already have, so that you can get the next one. So, I'm jumping around a little bit, but, so, helping to bring the assistant manager onboard for next year, for me, is a big priority, and helping to train them, and make sure that they're like happy and fitting into the culture is, is a big thing. I've been very, you guys know, I've been very much in the weeds most of the time with grants, just because of all the grant management that's required. You kind of have to be like, every day, you're writing a letter, or you're responding to somebody's request. I'm trying to, my goal for 2024 is to balance that better. And that's a hundred percent on me, is to balance being in the weeds where I need to be, and, you know, being compliant, but also pulling back a little bit and being a little bit more strategic, and a little bit more thinking about bigger projects, spending more time researching some, some of the federal stuff, especially before it, you know, goes away. And underneath all of that, I, I won't kind of bore you with the stuff of, you know, quarterly reports, and compliance reports, and fiscal reports, and, you know, drawdowns, and there's all of those things that, that take all, I, I'm always amazed how much longer they take than I think they should, or think they would, but it's kind of that balancing act. But I'm hoping, 2023 has been a real ringer, to be honest, to, like going through the wringer like, like through the dryer. And I'm hoping 2024 might be a little bit less like that, but, I mean, it is what it is, and I'll do whatever needs to be done to make sure that the city doesn't miss out on opportunities. So I have my, my responses to the budget questions are very much like me. They're very kind of, sort of personal, and here's what I'm doing. Versus kind of a department, because I'm a Department of One, so it's hard for me to say, I want my department to do this, because my department is me. I, I have these spreadsheets that I'm, I've sent to you before, that I've updated now for the year end. These are all the grants, these are all the city grants, like city-only grants that we have, and also city grants that we've applied for. What these sheets, so I have them sorted by date. I have another set sorted by project. I'm hoping that would make it easier for, as you, as you read through them and look at them, you can see, okay, here's Sheets and Ladders Phase Two, we have three different grants supporting that. Or, or Paxton Parkway, Creek and Trail, we have four different grants supporting that. And so I tried to sort it by that, so that you could see that, and it might make it more sort of easy to see, like, here's the project, here's what we're doing underneath it. I also did one that was sorted by date, in case that was easier for folk. What these spreadsheets do not include are all of the Dauphin County Gaming Grants, that, for which the city is the co-applicant. And there are about ninety of them live, going back to 2018. So those are grants that are, were kind of a pass-through for those grants. I didn't put them on here, because there's just so many of them. But the city, it's not our money, and we don't get to spend the money, they're not our projects. However, we do have to approve any funding requests. Anytime any of these co-applicants wants to draw down their money, we have to write a letter saying that we approve that. So I have to go through and make sure that their request is appropriate to their grant, and they have all of their documentation, their invoices, their canceled checks, have they overdrawn their grant. There's actually a ton of work involved with that, which is sort of a, I don't know, it sort of goes off in the shadows, because it's, it's not really our money, but it, and usually these grants are not large. They're, you know, forty-five, seventy-five, a hundred thousand dollars. They're not big. So I didn't put those on the spreadsheet, but I certainly can. And that's a process that we do every September. Don't know if that's helpful.
Thank you very much. I appreciate all the work that you do as your department. The amount of resources that you bring into the city is unmatched, and I really appreciate it. I, I think it's very important for you to get some help in your office, because we don't want, you do so much, that we don't wanna burn you out. You need to have that life balance as well. And we appreciate your dedication, but we wanna make for sure that you're also taking care of you. So we appreciate everything that you do. I personally do not have any questions. I'll open it up to my- I'll open it up to my colleagues. I'll start to my far right with Councilman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well said. I totally agree, a balance is important. How are we currently advertising for that position?
So I know it's been advertised through HR, but I don't know, do we do it through Indeed?
Can you step to the microphone? If I can't hear any.
Yes, it's been advertised through Indeed, and there are some applicants.
Is it currently still ever, being advertised? Like, is that add up right now? Okay, because I see it's budgeted for at sixty-nine, a little over sixty, almost seventy. So there's something we're definitely looking to fill, like, as soon as possible, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Are we considering maybe open house days, where we're kind of like allowing people to come in, get like spot-on interviews perhaps, or?
I don't know, it sounds kind of cool.
Yeah, get innovative to fill the position.
We also have some internal people interested in the position, so.
But then we'll be lax, another position, and we'll merry-go-round, right? So that's, I think, just in my opinion, something we should avoid, because that will be taken from another area that we definitely need those people from. So definitely getting creative, innovative with the hiring or onboarding, training, et cetera. But I definitely, to Madam Chair's point, I just, you do so much, and you bring in so much, that you definitely, we don't want to burn you out, and then we'll be looking for two people in your department, and then Ms. Kelly will be, you know, trying to figure it out. So I just, it's definitely appreciated. Are there any funds currently that we're out of compliance in or that you feel a bit behind on? Or do you feel everything is pretty much on, on spec right now?
We're, we're good, we're really good, except for one, which is one of our PCCD grants. We still have to get it under paper. We're just, we had to revamp the budget, because a lot of the things that we had applied for were not compliant, were not eligible under that grant.
Is that the GVI by chance?
No, the GVI, the GVI is good, GVIP is good.
Okay.
It's the LL, it's the law, local law enforcement.
Got you, okay.
Yeah, yeah, that one, I've been speaking, our guy is John Holheber and John Haas at PCCD. We've been talking with them. So two things we need to do. One, we have to put another person on as another contact, because right now it's me, so we need a second person. My understanding is there's some changeover at HPD, so I, I, I'm not, I don't, whatever. I don't know if I'm, I'm not sure who else might end up being on that grant.
Right.
I know who might have been, but I don't think he will be in the future. I think there's some senior folks who might be retiring.
And that's the license plate reader, et cetera, that's, okay, okay.
Uh, no, that's the, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, but it's, so what we need to do is, is put another person on that grant, confirm that the, the new budget, which is less than what we applied for, because a lot of the stuff we applied for is just, they just can't pay it.
Yes.
And then once we do that, we can get it under paper, and we can go.
Okay. And with the Jackson Lick pool, I know you said that had a few challenges itself. Is that because the Harrisburg School District? Or how do, how do they play into the grant now?
That's something that Mr. Grover would know more about than me.
Okay.
When I was referring to having some very hard negotiations a little while ago, that's exactly what I was talking about.
Okay.
I will be frank, I told them that they can take what we've offered them, or they can have the keys, because they locked our people out today when they went in to do the survey. And they insist that we only do construction when school year is not in session, which, which doesn't work.
Okay.
So I, I, I will frankly tell you, I do not believe those are the words of the receiver. I believe those are representatives of the school district. But they've sent me a very long document, which I rejected, increasing the city's insurance obligations substantially for no reason.
From a legal standpoint, so to Mr. Grover, anything involving Jackson Lick that the city applied for, would we have to, like, take a?
Figure it out.
Okay, okay.
You know, the, the state is cooperative with grants, you know, they're not really in the business of taking them away. They're working, coming to solutions. DCED has been very cooperative over the years when something isn't working, because they don't want to return the money on their end.
Right.
And so, you know, so we've had different amendments over the years when things change. I, I'm going to push that it still go forward, but it just, they've never controlled the site. And we are the only ones who, the mayor of Harrisburg in nineteen sixty-eight built that pool with, with money. I don't really understand the history.
Right.
But, you know, it, it, but, but we are just not taking on additional responsibilities on top of everything else we have, because someone is advising them that we should. They, they did not even know they owned it. I mean, so.
Wow, that's another conversation. But thank you, thank you, Ms. Volmer. No further questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman Daniels.
This is not a very specific question, but have you noticed any changes in the types of ways in which grants are being administered? The types, the nature of what's being funded? Of the way in which it's, they're kept track of? Are there any patterns that you're noticing as we move forward into 2024? And, you know, the city continues to apply for additional grants?
Yeah, no, that's actually a super interesting question. I noticed in 2022, there were a lot of agencies, both federal and state, and a lot of this money comes from the feds down through the state. Like, there's one we're looking at for IT cybersecurity that originates with DoD, and it's coming to Department of Defense, it's coming down through Department of Homeland Security to FEMA, then to PIMA, and, right? And then there's like an allotment, and, but we don't necessarily get the allotment, Pennsylvania, it's ten million, something, something, which is a lot lower than it should be, given how much money there is out there. It's a weird one. But so then PIMA has to apply to FEMA and say, hey FEMA, we want our ten million dollar allotment. And if they get it, then PIMA can turn around. And, and it's like, it's an entitlement grant for PIMA. It's like, they just get the money. Once they get it, then they turn around and they do a competitive round across Pennsylvania. And then everybody in Pennsylvania can like, you know, hardscrabble to go after it. So getting back to your point, there was a, there was a, in 2022, it seemed to me that agencies couldn't give the money away fast enough. Like, they just could not get rid of it fast enough. It's part of how we ended up with this thirteen million dollar grant for the parks, is that DCED had this money from HUD that was a stub that they hadn't been able to allocate, and they wanted to allocate it to good projects, not just to anybody. But it was there, and the urgency was crazy. That has changed a little bit in 2023, but there's still this pent-up infrastructure bill, bill, all these different infrastructure grants that, and what's, what, what I am seeing happening is that these federal grants, that when the money hasn't been fully expended, Congress at, at like the US level will shove it all into a bucket and say, all right, here, here's another big ball of stuff, get rid of it. It's almost a little bit like, you know, investing in housing bonds. I hate to say it that way, but, I mean, there's, and, we're going to come, there are going to be these snowballs of funds that are conglomerations of other stubs of funds that haven't been spent from different legislation that came out of Washington. And somebody's got to get rid of it, or they're going to have to figure out how to give it back. And nobody wants, nobody ever wants money back. A long-winded way of saying, it's the same urgency, it's a little bit more, it's muddier. Like, in 2022 was more clear. It's like, straight line, down to you guys. Now it's kind of, we've got this thing. Can you guys, can you find a way to make your case that what the project you have fits into these five different projects that have been mushed into this ball of funding, because we've had to kind of mush it together and to get it out? So in 2024, I think it's going to be back to 2022, where we, they just, they just want to get the funding appropriated and allocated before it might go, all be pulled back and go away, if we have a change in the winds after the election.
Thank you, Councilwoman Majors.
Thank you, and thank you for the work that you do. And, you know, hopeful we'll be able to, you know, the, the process of finding someone to fill the vacancy will be good for '24. Just in terms of the budget, I just noticed that the printing and professional services lines were zeroed out for '24. Is there any particular reason for that?
Yeah, so Tim and I met a couple months ago, and there are a number of line items in my budget that I never use, and that's one of them. And also professional services, like, for me to purchase professional or professional services, it would be something like a grant management database. It'd be something like on the order of fifteen or twenty thousand. It's never on the order of twenty-five hundred. So I never use it, and it just seems silly for it to be sitting in my budget when I don't use it. So I thought, let's just zero it out, let someone else use it. Because I, and thanks to Marita, I, I use their printer and their paper. It's a, so we kind of zeroed out anything that I don't, I don't use myself, because I just, I mooch off these guys.
Okay.
But I really, again, I, I just wanted to, it just seemed like every year there was, you know, three, four, or five thousand dollars in my budget that didn't get used, and that didn't seem like a great, you know, use of the taxpayers' money, so.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, President Bowers.
I don't have any questions, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Lawson.
Thank you, I, I don't have any questions. And again, we hope that we get someone in your position there. Thank you.
Thank you, and Councilwoman Ross.
Thank you, Vice President Green, and thank you for being here, Ms. Volmer. And as always, thank you for the work you do. You have gone after a lot of grants for the city and provided us with a lot of money where we are able to update or keep up to date some of the things that we have here. So thank you for that, especially the playgrounds. You've done a lot where it comes to that. And, and thank you for the relationships that you form with grant holders, because I do think they respect the work that you do. And that is a, a big reason why we get some of the grants that we do. So thank you for that. The only question that I had is, I didn't want to cut you off, I didn't know if you were going to say something, so I'm sorry.
Oh, no, just, um, thank you so much, that's so kind. I, I have to say, there are a lot of people at the city who have these relationships too, and they, and a lot of what we end up being able to bring in is, is not my relationships, it's, it's theirs. I mean, I kind of piggyback off of them, and I have my own, and I'm building them, but like, really and truly, a lot of the stuff that comes to our attention and that we get to, you know, create and develop, it's, it's, there are a lot of different people at the city involved, a lot.
Thank you, thank you for that humble response. I just have one question. I was wondering if there were any grants you anticipated going after that would help move the city into the 21st century even more? Whether it be the electric scooters or bikes that residents can rent? I know we want to be more mobile within our community. I know that's a big thing going on right now, and I would love to see that in the city. But that or anything else you see that you, grants you would like to go over, go after to help move us even closer to that 21st century mark?
I love that question. I, so, there's one that's, it's not in that direction, but it, it's one we've been looking at for a long time. It's kind of like my white whale. It's, it's the National Park Service ORLP, Outdoor Recreation and Leisure, Outdoor, yeah, ORLP. And it's, provides, the reason it's so attractive is it, it, you can apply for millions of dollars. You can use the value of the land as the match. And you can use it, which is going to sound stupid, you can use it to pay for parking, which almost no grant will allow you to build a parking lot or renovate a parking lot, or make it, take a parking lot and make it into a green parking lot. This one will let you do that. There's a lot of hoops.
Yeah, we need. Because we don't need all our parking lots.
No, yeah. So it's, we've had our eyes on that one for Hall Manor for a long time.
Hmm, okay.
It's a complicated one, though. And it's, and we've looked at it for a couple years, and we've like actually started applications for a couple years. We're coming up, they, 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 they accept applications in the spring, like April and in September. So we're looking at that one, to see if we can finally get it. But there's mapping issues and, what's the word? Mr. Grover, like chain of control, like, it's not clear exactly with the ownership there. I think you were speaking about that earlier. Yeah, yeah. So there's that one. There is a Internet-for-All grant that would wire the city through mesh nodes. But, and then there's, there's a ton of stuff coming down for electric vehicles, and also to electrify the roads. And that is something that I know there's a, a number of different folks in the city who are interested in, in doing that, especially working with PennDOT, because that's, I think they're taking the lead on that. But the electric vehicle thing they were talking about, like the scooters, that's interesting.
Yes, I like, when I travel to different cities, I see that a lot. I know a lot of people are nervous, saying maybe the scooters would be just left out, or the bikes, or how would you collect them all? But they do have a system for it. And they are left out sometimes, but there's a system of collecting them, and it does help that city, help their residents become more mobile. Because, you know, everybody doesn't have a way of, for transportation.
Right, and I think, I think you just, you have to put in your credit card, and if you don't return it, then you get charged.
You get charged more. No one wants money taken from their pockets, so you're going to return that, you're going to return that rental property.
Yeah.
So I, I, I think it's a great idea. My last question was, do you see any grants that we could go after that helps with some of our affordable living? Get solar panels, or just any residents in the city being able to get solar panels on their house? But I, I look at it more so, especially for the affordable housing, because I know that's a big thing to help. Because sometimes I know they get help with their electric bill. So sometimes that's a way of not needing that assistance and actually, you know, sending power back to the grid, per se. So I was wondering if there was any grants coming up for that that we could try to go after?
Definitely, there is a lot under the infrastructure. It's called infra, short, because it's obviously we're too lazy to say infrastructure, but it's the infra bill. it's the infra, uh, bill, so yeah, there are several, um, infrastructure bills that are still out there with a lot of federal funding, and that's the kind of thing that I'm concerned, I mean, I want to make sure we, uh, make the best use of and really understand and really go after in twenty-twenty-four, because that's the one, those are the ones I'm worried about going away, I guess.
Yes, no, I agree, they will eventually.
Yeah.
Um, they're here because of COVID, and they'll go away, um, because people will think there's no need for them anymore, when there's an even greater need to improve the infrastructure, so, thank you for that, that's all I have.
Sure, sure.
Thank you, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you very much for being here, we have one more?
Yeah, sorry, uh, looking at, um, the grant list here.
Yeah.
ADA accessibility in the building, and still looks like we're still, the work hasn't started yet on that one, is that correct? This is the MLK ADA improvement from the gaming, Dolphin County Gaming Grant, twenty-twenty-three.
Yes, um, yeah, so, um, sorry, uh, which spreadsheet are you on, sorry?
Uh, this is page three of the document you gave us, it's, uh,
By project.
Fourth from the bottom. Yeah, if you go from the bottom, fourth one up, facilities.
It's this sort of by project. Well, in any case, the, the, the MLK ADA renovation project is, uh, we've been slowly raising funds for that. Uh, we got a hundred and forty-five thousand, uh, three years ago, we got, no, I'm sorry, two years ago, we got, we're looking for three hundred thousand this year, we just applied for a million to the Pennsylvania Commonwealth Local Share. It's also gaming grants, but it's at the, it's at the state level. So technically, the, the construction work hasn't started, but there's been all kinds of, um,
Project scoping, all those, project scoping?
Yeah, project scoping, and, uh, the contractors have been out, and we've had, uh, we have, we have a new engineering contract and a new, um, cost estimate, so it's, it's moving, but it's, it's kind of a huge project, that's.
Okay, all right, and then I guess, well, I'll, I might have some other questions for public works on, at engineering, on some of our other larger ADA accessibility things, but thank you.
No, you're welcome.
Thank you, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you very much for being here tonight, once again, we appreciate all the work that you do.
Thanks for having me, thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, now, we do have one more addition to the agenda. I believe we're going to have an update to question number twenty-six, provided by Mr. Brian McCutcheon. And question twenty-six was, does this budget anticipate the need to use any fund balance?
Uh, yes, it does, not joyful to report that, but that pertains to the general fund, and there's a reasonable, there's a reasonableness to that based on, the total amount approximates five point two million, in other words, uh, revenue, total revenue versus total expenditures, revenue falls under that total for expenditures by five point two million in, in next year's proposed budget. And that, the focus on that is the city's initiative to move the, um, FNB Field Project forward, involving, of course, the Harrisburg Senators' baseball team. So there's a commitment initiative for that, where the general fund is to fund that, um, in portions, starting next, next year, actually, well, actually, starting this year, because we recently, um, um, did a reallocation for two point eight, two point eight million, uh, for that project. So over the next, twenty-twenty-four's anticipation is the five point two, and then the final piece is in twenty-twenty-five. There's a comeback of funding to the general fund based on the, uh, the, the R cap grant, uh, which is six million dollars, so that will be a recovery to the general fund over the course of, of future, uh, future months, over the next, next two years. But I, I liken that, as far as what makes it reasonable, if you think about what the city did earlier this year with, with the AMBAC debt, again, that was a significant outlay, of course, and that was, was a justified, uh, use of fund balance, and we're viewing, in, in a similar fashion, uh, the commitment to u, upgrade, uh, FNB Field Stadium.
Thank you very much, any questions or comments regarding that update? Seeing none, I believe we are done with all of our committee business, and we'll be moving on to public comments. So we will start public comments, um, I'm going to let President Bowers go over the rules, because I do not have them memorized.
Okay, thank you very much, um, we will now move forward with our agenda with public comment. Just a few housekeeping notes before we begin, uh, please state your name and your address for the meeting record. If you don't feel comfortable sharing your address, please share the vicinity in which you live within the city. You'll have two minutes to share your comments, Mr. Truesdale will serve as our timekeeper, and I'll begin to my right, is there anyone that would like to offer a public comment?
Good evening, my name's Kelsey White, I live here in Midtown Harrisburg. I had planned to share the demand letter that you've all reviewed by now, for the sake of the record this evening, but after the mayor's comments tonight, I'd like to redirect my comments. The mayor claims the city has done everything in its power to address this crisis, as though allowing people to take sponge baths by fire hydrants and sleeping on the floor of a Rite Aid is something to pat ourselves on the back for. The mayor also seems to think her administration has a handle on this issue, yet in her time of public service, it is clear that the problem has only worsened. The mayor touted what the city did last year, which disregards the fact that many of the folks living outside right now are newly homeless as a result of the affordable housing shortage that has grown in the last year. We would like to know what she plans to do for this year. City leadership has the opportunity, in the coming weeks, to show their constituents that they are committed to permanent solutions. And in the meantime, our demands are the following. Make available portable toilets, hand washing stations, and sharps disposal containers in the park, and ensure their regular maintenance to reduce environmental risk to both park residents and the public. Maintain all city-owned trashcans in the park and provide the necessary PPE for waste management workers in order to carry out the regular maintenance. And finally, last, or finally, and most importantly, allow the unhoused residents of the city of Harrisburg to remain in place with the provision that their presence does not obstruct traffic, pedestrian walkways, or ADA-compliant routes of tra, transportation. On behalf of the hundred and fifty people that have signed on to our demand letter, we welcome the city's response to these demands and expect real investments towards housing our neighbors, thank you.
Thank you, is there anyone else to my right that would like to offer public comment?
Can you guys all hear me?
If you could please use the microphone, it's being, the meeting is being recorded.
Oh, it's, okay.
You can, you can adjust it or take it out of the holder, thank you.
That was my reluctance, I'm a little vertically challenged.
Hi, I'm Penny, I, uh, live in between, uh, Penn and Em, Penn and Emerald, uh, and Seneca, so I'm in Uptown. Um, so my, I have a couple of things, because I sat in on this meeting, a couple of things that I want to point out. We used to do public comment, also at the beginning of these meetings, I don't know if it changed up because of it specifically being a budget hearing, but I would suggest that we do public comment maybe before all of this, so then you guys have a better chance to address some of the issues being brought to you. Two, also hearing these budget meetings, it really sounds like a lot of people are wearing a lot of hats. And one thing I know about hats, they go on heads, and you only got one of them. And as much as I know that it's kind of touting that we're kind of saving money by doing this, I think that all it's going to eventually do is bring on calamity. Bringing me to the main reason why I'm here today, is I did hear that there was a person that's designated with a whole bunch of other tasks in dealing with the houseless population here in Harrisburg. I remember when they moved Mulberry Street, not even a year ago, and there were a lot of promises made, and none of them were fulfilled. And a lot of those same folks now are living down by the river, because it's the only place for them to be. And I honestly think that just posting a sign with no date is really dehumanizing. Because, yeah, you may give them blankets, and you may give them an old shop that they can stay, and may even give them soup, but you're not giving them dignity. And you got to ask yourself, why are people not utilizing these things that we are giving them? And it's because it doesn't have dignity, what do they need, let's ask them. Let's actually come up with a permanent solution to give these people permanent homes, if that's what works for them. But I'm tired of seeing these sweeps coming out of nowhere, getting everybody upset, and not knowing what to do, including the people that live there. Have a wonderful night.
Thank you, is there anyone else to my right that would like to offer public comment?
Hello? Uh, my name's Kareem Morsy, I live and work in town, I, uh, can be very brief with my comments and specific to what I know. Uh, I've spent the last few years working with people in our community who come through the justice system. Uh, not all of them have been homeless for many years, in fact, many of the unhoused population are currently employed, uh, they struggle to survive, um, either they have dependents, or the means of basic subsistence are beyond reach, which they are for many of us. Our county human services director even identified that many people currently living in shelters are doing so because they are unable, unable to pay rent and cycle between shelters and the street. The unhoused community are overwhelmingly represented in our prison population, many of whom face challenges with reentry, such as their mental health, their substance use disorder, and our service providers, which the mayor did, um, name and talk about the great work that they do, um, they consistently struggle just to remain in touch with our neighbors upon their release. Uh, many of them don't get to continue medications, they don't have treatments that they're going to next, and lose their belongings upon their return. Because of this, many folks are left with nothing, and are often met with a police response that has only served to continue their cycle of incarceration. Many of them leave without a viable plan for their return, return to the community, that is, and some are even excluded from services due to the nature of their charges or prior convictions, which, given our criminal justice system, has been many, uh, of them. Mind you, this is the same county jail that is notoriously overcrowded, undermanned, under reports of jail deaths, and will likely be investigated in the near future for gross abuses of conduct. That's our county jail, it's not you guys. When these sweeps happen, much of the unhoused population are left with nowhere to go, and they reside in abandoned homes or loiter in our communities. Obviously, this puts both their health and safety, as well as ours, health and safety at risk. You saw the other week, a few of our unhoused neighbors had stayed in an abandoned building on Sixteenth and Market, which ended up burning down, uh, and affecting numerous, uh, area residents and businesses. Uh, the precarious economic crisis felt throughout our country puts more of our neighbors at risk of homelessness every year. We need a robust plan, as the chairwoman said, to lift up the residents of Harrisburg and their socioeconomic conditions. As you look to deliberate on what belongs in this budget, I encourage you to consider our demands and make an honest effort at protecting our neighbors. This is not a situation for the mayor to make excuses like, they don't want the help. It is a policy failure and a sign that anything being done to remedy the situation is simply not enough. I respect you and all the work that you do, I understand that this did not happen overnight, and prior administrations have tried to deal with this issue, but I am going to hold you responsible for this problem and accountable for producing the solution, thank you.
Thank you, is there anyone else to my right that would like to offer public comment?
Sure is. Um, my name is Jonathan Dunkelberger, I live in Lower Allen, and I run the Harrisburg Bike Crew here in town. Um, I'm here tonight to urge the city council and the mayor's office to cancel the city's upcoming plans to sweep the unhoused folks out of Riverfront Park in the dead of winter, yet again, just like with the Mulberry Street Bridge encampment. The cruelty of repeating, repeatedly targeting and displacing these, the city's most vulnerable residents, is beyond the pale. My question for the city is this, where are you going to get enough concrete rubble to fill Riverfront Park? As we've seen in the past sweeps of homeless encampments in Harrisburg, the city's goal doesn't seem to be active, actually solving the problems that cause so many people in the city to experience homelessness, but rather simply to keep homelessness out of the public eye. Rather than continually pushing these folks from place to place, then leaning on churches and nonprofit organizations that are already doing as much as they can and are often at capacity, the city ought to be treating its most vulnerable citizens as human beings who need help, not trash to be swept away and hidden. The role of government is to provide services, not to simply point to non-government organizations like the Capital Area Commission on Homelessness and other charities, nonexistent public toilets and homeless encampments along the Green Belt that have already been evicted as things we're doing to help. I implore the mayor and the city council to do the hard thing here, and dig into the problem and come up with real solutions, not just kick the can down the road again. Maybe figure out who took my, uh, signs down in Riverfront Park today, because if that sort of urgency is applied to the city's homelessness issue, everyone in the city will have a warm, clean, safe place to live in no time.
Thank you, is there anyone else to my right that would like to offer public comment?
Amber Blaylock, from the New Fox Ridge Neighborhood. Happy holidays, it's the season of light, joy, cold nights, and apparently evicting homeless folks from a little shelter they have. I find myself tired of discussions about Harrisburg's homeless problem, which treat unsheltered people as though they are the problem, and not the ones facing the most substantial problems of the situation. In fact, I go as far as to say that we shouldn't talk about a homeless problem, or even a homelessness problem. We don't have a problem with homeless people, we have a problem with lack of available housing, we have a problem with inadequate services, and these problems will not go away by forcibly evicting the people camped along Riverfront Park any more than they did when the city forced out the people in the Mulberry Bridge encampment or along the Green Belt. It is not enough to tell people to go to winter shelters. I guarantee you, there is no one in Riverfront Park who is unaware that Harrisburg has winter shelters, yet they're still not there. And it's important to seriously consider why, and to have genuine compassion for these reasons, because it's more than them not wanting the help. There are many reasons that someone might avoid a shelter, the most obvious is that there may not be room, and that is often certainly the case, but it goes even beyond that. They may have a beloved companion animal who can't stay at the shelter with them. They may have bad experiences or religious differences with faith-based organizations. They may sometimes go to the shelters, but keep a tent in the encampment to store their belongings. They may be having mental health problems, and maybe they're having problems with drugs and alcohol, and the shelter requires them to be sober first. And you know what, we should have compassion for that, too, because addiction, too, is an illness, and getting sober is hard. That's why we have entire facilities, counselors, and programs dedicated to helping people do it. Rehab centers may not be available, and it's callous to ask people to go through withdrawal on the streets, unassisted, before they can even get a roof over their heads. It's still not a solution to keep people out of the only shelter they have and vaguely tell them to go somewhere else. And there is no one easy solution to the many problems which have led this is, to the situation, but here are some we might consider. The first and foremost would be to provide free and secure document storage lockers to anyone who requests one. It doesn't need to be a lot of space, just enough for someone with nowhere else to go to store their birth certificate, passport, or other records that they need in order to access services to help them get out of homelessness. Likewise, we should offer a digitization of important records as backups, also stored securely. Loss of crucial documents is a major obstacle for many people, and it's something that we can do to help with the, uh, lease investment. But the second and hardest is to actually get people homes, housing first.
Thank you.
Thank you, is there anyone else to my right that would like to offer public comment?
I will also not be reading. I, I, I have really short comments, and then the administration decided they wanted to, uh, provide this information. So, my name is Brandon Basem, I think you all know me, I'm from the three thousand block of, uh, Third Street. Usually on Tuesdays, I enjoy, you know, fixing bikes for the community, I have a recycled bicycle, but I'm here for a couple of reasons, one, it's budget season, and I kind of love budget season, because what a city spends money on is what it prioritizes, but then there's a couple of other reasons, and they're not as good. First of all, on a happy note, I'm excited about any talk of a road diet, especially up on Division Street. I live up there, there are kids who are, you know, hurt there trying to get to school, most kids walk, it is entirely too wide, the intersection is dangerous. I've almost been hooked a few times. Now, what I'm going to get to, of course, is State Street is entirely more deadly, we've had it held up forever. We had promises from this administration, from, uh, Matt Maisel himself, that we'd have this resolved in a matter of no time, that we would definitely have a road diet, we would definitely have bike infrastructure, that would get safer. As it stands now, what's being proposed, unless something's changed, is just a repaving project. They're going to just repave the road, do their milling, it'll get no less wide, it'll get no less dangerous. And if we let them repave that road now, improvements won't be made for a generation, because Harrisburg is not really good on coming up when it's due, and these roads are, I think, what, built out for thirty years? Any talk of we'll do whatever fixes after the eighty-three expansion is false, and I mean, and even if I wanted to believe them, they've shown themselves to be untrustworthy so far on that, so, uh, let me see. Oh, and most importantly, now that we need to slow traffic, when they're going to be narrowing down eighty-three and sending traffic through our city to reroute, that's when it gets more deadly, these are populated neighborhoods, and if we sent, you know, highway traffic through their suburban neighborhoods, the answer would be absolutely not, but it changes when it's Harrisburg, and it changes depending on what neighborhood you're in Harrisburg, so. Uh, secondly, I think our, our priorities are severely out of whack, uh, it's strange that our planning department and our grants department, who make us money, are basically a rounding error in our budget, whereas we fund our police with pretty much anything they ask for at any time, while lacking any, you know, sort of like, money towards actual public safety? I mean, I, we can disagree on whether or not we need police, but violence isn't the only way to keep people safe. I mean, we need mental health, we need physical health, we need, again, shelter, we need all sorts of other issues, and I'm just going to keep going, I'm sorry. I remember finding out how horrified I was that we were behind on licensing, I had an officer come because one of my neighbors said one of my dogs was unlicensed, and the city took my word for it, because we hadn't caught up on the license I applied for years ago, which, I mean, we paid for that, so I hope you guys at least cash the check, because otherwise, that's embarrassing. Again, we are once again responding to an emergency entirely of this administration's making. In an example of the worst planning in history, we are displacing houses, people, for the third time in the middle of winter during the holiday season. I don't know if there is nobody with a conscience making decisions, or who understands what, like, optics are, but somebody has to take responsibility.
Thank you.
Constantly putting, hold on, instead of constantly, there's not that many people, I, I'm, I'm going to finish, and then I'll try to fix bikes next time.
Well, thank you for your comments, thank you.
Oh, okay.
You also have the opportunity to submit written comments, too, that's always.
Do they get read, are they read anymore, like, before?
They don't get read during the meetings, but they are added to the meeting record, but all council members do receive them along with when you send them to public comment.
Okay, this isn't part of my comment, but if we could maybe have them read, there are a lot of people who submitted me things they wanted to have said, because they're houseless and they're not able to come to these meetings, and they don't feel that everyone hears them. No, I'm sure you won't read them, but the administration others, I think it's nice to have them out loud, so, if that could happen, that'd be great.
Thank you, is there anyone else to my right that would like to offer public comment? Okay, seeing and hearing no one, anyone in the middle section? Seeing and hearing no one, anyone to my left?
Good evening, Council, Pam Parsons, Holly Street. It's always interesting to be at budget hearings, both my least favorite and very favorite time of the year. I would like to remind Council once again that a budget is a moral document, and I don't mean that in a religious sense. What I mean is budgets should reflect our values. And once again, we have a budget which says police is what Harrisburg values most. And certainly, the folks that everyone else has talked about, the unhoused people, are the ones that don't matter. And we spend a lot of time talking about them, and they aren't even present. I noted tonight that we talked about the, uh, equity and compliance, uh, not officer, special assistant, the person that we pay more than anyone else assistant, the person that we pay more than anyone else in this city, a hundred and four thousand dollars with benefits. That's more than the mayor makes, by the way. And we don't know what he does. There is no report and he's not required to make a quarterly report. Yet, we will move people for the third time this year, we will move unhoused people. And we will move them to a place that we know, all of you know, that Pendot is going to move them yet again. This is a can that has been kicked down the road for nearly forty years. I was part of the first grouping of catch and nothing has happened since that time. And someone here needs to take responsibility to deal with this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to my left that would like to offer public comment? Okay, seeing and hearing no one. The time is eight fifty-eight PM. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We stand adjourned.